We are shortly going to be broadcasting live on Channel 35. As we are right now, good morning. It's Friday, March 17th, a very happy St. Patrick's Day to everybody. And we are here in the Los Angeles City Council. We're also celebrating Persian New Year. And we will have some great presentations headed your way in just one moment. But I want to thank first Councilmembers Cardenas, Labange, Padilla, Perry, Rosendall, Smith, and Zine for being here. We have right now eight members. We need 10 members for a quorum to begin the regular business. But as customary, on Fridays, we have special presentations to honor members of our community, heroes from our neighborhoods, and significant accomplishments and festivities such as the St. Patrick's Day and Noru's celebrations we will be engaging in today. So I'd like to recognize for our first presentation, we have councilmembers, we have a longtime friend of Los Angeles, the Consul General of Japan, Yoshio Nomoto, who will be leaving his service here in Los Angeles. And Councilwoman Jan Perry, who represents the little Tokyo portion of downtown Los Angeles, the ninth council district, will give our first presentation. Welcome, Council General, and thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Please give her a hand.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I am honored to present our special guest today, Council General Yoshio Nomoto, Council General for Japan in Los Angeles. After a wonderful two and a half years, Council General Nomoto will be moving on to a new post. And he has served with distinction here in Los Angeles during which time he has made a lasting and positive impact on our community. During his time here, he worked with a number of community organizations to make the celebration of the 150th year anniversary of Japan and United States relations a real success. He worked with various veterans groups during the 60th anniversary of the end of World War II, and took this opportunity to discuss how Japan has moved forward in its relationships with the United States in a mutual understanding in the pursuit of friendship and peace. This message was and continues to be a very powerful one, and is a testament to the honorable legacy that Council General Nomoto will leave behind as he moves on to his next post. He has been a leading voice in maintaining and promoting goodwill between the Japanese-American community and Japan, and we all have appreciated his commitment to our community here in Los Angeles. And so today, I wanted to take this last opportunity to recognize Council General Nomoto for all of his good work, to thank him for his service here in Southern California, and to wish him and his family the very best of times as he moves forward to his next post with the Ministry of Foreign Affairs in Japan. And before I ask Council General to speak, I would like to ask my colleague, who has never had a lack of words, Councilman Tom Labange.
Thank you very much. Let's give Jan Perry a great hand this morning. Council General Nomoto, you've been a great friend of Los Angeles. It's been a joy to have you. My, does time fly so fast and such a quick post, but you're being reassigned back to Japan, which is very important because I know how hard you worked here. I'm just very pleased the work that you've done for our Nogoya-Los Angeles relationship, the longest sister-city relationship that any sister-city has. And I'm so pleased you live in our district, you involve yourself in many aspects of Los Angeles life. Council General Nomoto, congratulations on your post in Los Angeles. We will really miss you, and I was so pleased to have you in our home for Thanksgiving to celebrate that great American holiday. But you're a great representative. As we all know, Los Angeles, next to New York City, has the most consulates, and we're very proud of you and all of your colleagues, but especially proud of you. Big hand for Councilmember Nomoto.
And before Council General Nomoto speaks, I have to say I had no idea you had such a wonderful singing voice. He sang a duet at his farewell dinner with his wife, and it brought the house down. Council General.
Good morning, councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for wonderful recognition. And when I see it, I can remember the spur of a phase of my life spent in Los Angeles. It has been my honor to serve as the Council General of Japan here. During my two and a half years, Japan and the United States celebrated 150th year since their beginning of the relations, and 60th year of new ties after the war. Fortunately, I have been able to witness the enhancement of our nation's relations, and also my country's tie to the Southern California. More Japanese companies are operating here. More Japanese tourists are visiting Los Angeles, and more Japanese students are studying here. Thank you again for your friendship and the assistance which your city government, city council, the people of Los Angeles have extended to me. I pray for the further prosperity of Los Angeles and the development of Japan-US, Japan-Los Angeles relations. Thank you very much.
And we thank you very much, Council General Nomoto. We're very pleased to have you here. Doma arigato gozaimashita. And with that, we will now recognize our next presentation from Council District Eight, Mr. Bernard Parks, to recognize a very special member of our Metropolitan Transit Authority.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to ask a young man to come up here that many of us have met before, probably has enough certificates from the LA City Council and LA County and MTA to probably build a house. And many of you remember that two years ago, we honored him. But the reason he's here today is that he finally decided to call it quits after 72 consecutive years of service with the MTA and only have missed... And let me ask Mr. Wesson to come up and join me here. After 72 years of consecutive service with the MTA, he also is going to celebrate his 100th birthday on March 22, 2006. And with that 72 years, he's only missed two days of work. We should probably pass that through our websites and let all of our employees know about that attendance record. Today, and please, Mr. Wesson is here because he's also has had a long-term relationship with Mr. Art Winston. But one of the things I think is so important, and I also like to ask Dana Coffey, his supervisor, come up. But let me give you a couple of tidbits about Mr. Winston's life. He was born in Oklahoma in 1906, graduated from Jefferson High School in 1922, first employed by the Pacific Electric Railroad Company in December 1924, and worked until the mid-1928. I resumed his employment with that agency in 1934. Mr. Winston is the most senior employee at the LA County MTA. He has worked a total of 74 years in public transit. He currently works as a service attendant leader directing a crew of 11 employees who clean, maintain, and refuel Metro buses. He was awarded the Employee of the Century Award by the former president, William Clinton, in 1996. MTA actually renamed Division Five Bus Operating Headquarters at Chesterfield Square, the Arthur Winston Division. I am just pleased to be here and to honor him again. We told him if he ever decided to retire, we would bring him here and also to honor his 100th birthday. Let me give... He has so many certificates. What we want to do also is give him one more, which he can add to his wall and frame. The entire city council honors Mr. Winston on his 72nd consecutive year of service, and it also honors him on his 100th birthday. Let me ask Mr. Wesson to come up and make some comments, and then Mrs. Coffey.
Everybody, just give Art a round of applause. He's 100 years old, and his handshake is firmer than mine. I mean, I don't have... I don't think anyone would have the words to articulate how grateful, how thankful we are to you for your continuous service to the city of Los Angeles. To work for 72 years is unbelievable. And to live to 100, and maybe in your case, 200, because you are as spry as anybody I've ever met. But again, we want to thank you for everything that you've done, and I'm honored that Council Member Parks would ask me to participate in presenting you with this resolution that Lord knows you truly deserve. Thank you.
And one other thing we'd like... Just real quick before that, Mr. Labange wants to add a quick word, and then we'll...
Let me just want to... One other thing, want to honor him because he's been here so often. We're going to make him an honorary eighth district council member.
Hey, Mr. Parks, I hope you get a bus pass from Arthur since you made him a councilman. What a beautiful man, Arthur Winston, in your history in Los Angeles. Let's sing "Happy Birthday" everybody. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Arthur. Happy birthday to you.
I'm very excited to have this kind of honor today. So I don't have much to say. I'm so excited. I have much to say, but I'm happy for everybody here to enjoy me and knowing my age today. I've been hiding my age all the time, but now you know it. So I got a whole lot to say to you. I thank you for having me here today. Thank you a lot.
We also have with us, Ms. Dana Coffey, Mr. Winston's supervisor.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I'm Dana Coffey, I'm the Metro South Bay General Manager. I brought Arthur to this event this morning, and what happened, Arthur was going one direction, and I was going in the other direction. So we kind of got our wires mixed up. And when I went to pick him up, I called the division. He said that he was at the division. So I ran over there to pick him up, and then we ran back over here. And as we were going, there was a bus passing us. And I said, "Arthur, get that bus number for me." And he looked up immediately and said, "5135." And I said, "How does this man know what to look for so quickly and then be that alert to know what number it is and everything?" So he's just an amazing person. We're going to miss him, and he's not going to be very far from us because he's right down the street. We look forward to celebrating his 22nd, I'm sorry, 100th year birthday on March 22. He's amazing. Coming to work this morning, I looked at Arthur, and I said, "You know what, Arthur? I see you just about every day, but I don't realize that you are 100 years old." Until someone mentions it being his 100th year birthday, it's when I actually recognize that he is two decades of centuries, oh, not centuries, but 50 years old, past that point. So we're very proud of him. We thank all of you anytime that he's receiving attention, recognition, and for the honored work that he does every single day at our division, which is named after him, the Arthur Winston Division. So we're proud of him, and thank you all very, very much for inviting him.
Thank you. And we'd like to recognize for a comment, Mr. Rosendall. One more comment.
Arthur, could you come to the mic? No, right where you were over there, Arthur. Arthur, bring him back to the mic. Arthur, we want to learn from our elders. Give me the secret to long life. How can we all live to be 100? What have you done with your life that has blessed us and graced us for this time? Give me some advice.
Well, it's a long story. I don't fool with all these credit cards. I have one, some please, I want to weigh it. I don't fool them. So therefore...
Did you give the mic to the mic? Can we hear him to the microphone?
So I don't drink and I don't smoke.
You don't drink and you don't smoke.
That's right. No, I don't drink or smoke.
Any special food?
I eat food.
What kind of food?
I eat anything that don't eat me.
You've been staying busy all this time, working all the time?
It don't bother me. I love my job, so it didn't bother me. Work didn't bother nobody. If you don't like the job, don't do it.
You don't like your job, don't do it.
Get something you like. So I enjoy my work. I enjoy it. I go to work every day. Don't bother me. Main thing is getting up and getting into the job.
And your family? Did you have family?
Well, I got small family. I lost my wife, my family. But I'm still hanging in here. No, I feel good. I don't have no headaches. I don't have no ulcers. I don't have no heartburn. I don't have none of that stuff.
Well, God bless you, and thanks for coming here today.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Just last question, with all the work, Mr. Winston, what would you advise us to do to fix traffic problems in Los Angeles, huh? I'm just teasing. Give Arthur a big hand on all that service.
Ride, ride the bus.
Ride the bus. Ride the bus. Ride Metro, ride Metro.
Thank you again, Mr. Winston. Congratulations. Thank you very much. So we'll have the rebuttal from our Irish friends on the secrets for extending your life on St. Patrick's Day. I don't know, you can say no drinking, no smoking, but we'll see. All right. Will you please call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Cardenas, Gru, Han, Weisar, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendall, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present and accor, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Padilla moves, and Mr. Labange seconds. If there's no objection, that will be unanimous vote. So ordered.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Smith seconds. If there's no objection, that too will be unanimous vote. So ordered. Next order of business?
This is a time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay. Now it's time for public comment. We, I think, will be waiting on public comment right now. Hold that on the table. We will return to that. If we can run through the agenda, please.
Okay, the first items on the agenda are items for which public hearings have been held, items 1 through 27. Item 1 is a confirmation of a commissioner. Do you wish to hold it on the desk?
Yes, let's hold that confirmation on the desk.
And the rest of the items, items 2 through 27 are... have had their public hearings. Items 14 and 15, reports have been submitted, and items 17 through 26 all have two reports on the file. Some of them council can adopt both if they wish, and the others, they all require a motion.
Okay. Colleagues, we have items 2 through 27 before us right now. Do we have any specials?
Excuse me, Mr. President. I've been informed the Council District Two would like to continue item number 10 for two weeks.
Which one?
Number 10.
Number 10.
For two weeks.
And the due date would be March 31st.
Is there no objection to that, colleagues? If not, we will continue item 10 till March 31st. Okay? Any specials, colleagues? Mr. Smith?
27, then we'll hear it also in conjunction with 32.
Okay. So Smith, item 27. Other specials, colleagues? I would move then the... On item 14, that we have report to be... Sorry. The report is to be submitted right here? Sorry.
Yes, on 14 and 15, reports have been submitted and they've been distributed to the council members.
Okay, all right. So we don't need to do anything special there. Mr. Zine, special?
14 and 15 special.
14 and 15 special, but Mr. Zine? All right. On 17, we... Okay, Mr.... Mr. Rosendall, 16. Mr. Zine, 17.
Thank you.
On 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, we can adopt the budget and finance reports. If there's no objection, I would move that. And then on item 25 and 26, we can adopt both because they're not in conflict. If there's no objection to that, I also would move those. And if there's no other specials, let's open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Next order of business or next items?
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 28 through 67, and 10 votes are required for consideration on those.
Okay, colleagues, we have items 28 through 67. Ms. Perry?
I'd like to continue item 60 and call 64 special.
64 special by Ms. Perry. Is there any objection to continuing item 60 until when, Ms. Perry?
30 days.
Okay.
That would be April 18th.
April 18th. If there's no objection, that will be continued. Mr. Smith, and then Mr. Labange?
32.
32. Mr. Smith, Mr. Labange?
33 back to committee.
Okay, is there any objection to sending 33 back to committee, colleagues? If not, that will be the recommendation we vote on.
And I believe, Mr. President, on item number 34, there is... excuse me, 35, there is an amending motion.
Okay. Has that been circulated?
It hasn't been distributed yet. It's in the process.
Okay. Let's hold that on the table then. Any other specials, colleagues? Okay, seeing none, prepare the roll on the balance and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
28 through 31 will be carried over, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. President.
As ordinances?
For one week.
Mr. President, did I miss that? On number 40, Ms. Gru would like that called special?
All right, we will put that for reconsideration. At the moment, the rest of those are approved, including 34. Let's send that forthwith. Is that approved, Madam Clerk? We did 34?
Yes, it is, Mr. President.
Let's open the roll on reconsideration of item 40. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, that is backward force, and let's call that special too for Ms. Gru. All right, next items?
That would take council back to item number 1, which is a confirmation of a commissioner.
Okay. Colleagues, we'll be returning to presentations momentarily. We now are going to turn our attention, though, to, I think, the most urgent of the matters that we have before us right now, which is item 27, which Mr. Smith asked to be taken up with item 32 in concurrence. So if we can please do that first. And Mr. Miller, I know, is before us. And I'd like to recognize first Mr. Smith for some introductory comments.
Just...
Sorry, excuse me one second. Sorry, Mr. Padilla?
Fourth with on 28.
On 28? Okay. Oh, it got carried over. There weren't 12 members. We can reconsider to vote when there's 12 members, if you'd like. We'll hold that on the desk then, or we'll... We won't go forthwith on that. Okay, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, here we are again, and I think as Mr. Padilla commented last week, this is kind of like a... of like a hereditary disease. You're just going to get it, and that's what it is. I'm going to use that from now on. It's a good, yeah. But what we have before us today, members of council, is the final report back from the CLA on the negotiations on the contract with BFI, the matter which was brought to Ms. Perry's committee, my committee, regarding the diversion plan for the coming years. And finally, it is finally what we wanted to see, and that is a process that we, over the past year, this council has taken up the issue of landfilling, the issue of diversion, the issue of recycling, reuse, and finally, what it's going to cost to do all those things. And so I want to start off, and if you hold my time, ask for Mr. Miller to report on the negotiations as best he can in public. I know there's some issues that have to be in executive session if anyone wants to talk about some very specific issues in legalese, if you will. But I'd like to report back now to the council from Mr. Miller on the results of this excruciating process of negotiating over the past couple of weeks with BFI. Mr. Miller, hold my time, please.
Good morning. It certainly has been an interesting couple of weeks. I did want to, I do want to express my appreciation to Greg Lockname with BFI and Jim Teeter with Allied. They did come to the table and negotiate in good faith. And I think we have...
Can we have quiet, please? Thank you.
I think, well, I think what we have before you today is a good deal for the city. Now, they have agreed to allow the city to divert 600 tons per day to another landfill. The cost, the all-in cost for that is $3.50 per ton for the tonnage that remains at Sunshine Canyon. So that would be the remaining approximately 3,000 tons. Now, that $3.50 is made up of two components, which I think is very important to keep in mind. A dollar fifty of that is a resolution to their claims for change in law. I think, as most of you are aware, they notified, BFI notified the Bureau of Sanitation, that there are terms of their contract that allows them to pass through certain costs to the city if there's a quote-unquote "change in law." Now, there is, and that claim is $2.60 per ton. Now, I can't, I don't want to, in open session, get into the merits of that and the city attorney's view, but suffice it to say that there is a portion of that $2.60 that the city would in fact be liable for. So a dollar fifty of this is a resolution to that claim once and for all. Should the city not divert, we would be paying a dollar fifty per ton instead of the 2.60 that they're claiming. And that is precisely why I think today this is a very good deal for the city, so that we don't have to get into litigation and fight that out in court. And then, then the remainder of this is permissive. It would allow the city to divert the 600 tons. The cost of that would be an additional $2 million per ton. So in effect, the diversion would be an additional million and a half at Sunshine, plus roughly 1.9 million, as we presented to you last week, on the cost of a combination of El Sabrante and Avonall, for a total cost of about $3.4 million for the diversion. So that is, that is what's before you today. The terms include a requirement for a six-month notice and having contracts in place before we divert so they can develop business plans to back.
Mr. Miller? I'm really sorry, but you said 1 point million per ton. That's not what you meant, right?
Absolutely. I'm sorry. No, that's not what I meant.
Okay, can you clarify that? You were giving the, you started on the figure, additional figure of 1 point, I think 5 million or 2 million or something like that, but you used the term per ton. I just would like you to correct that for the record.
I'm sorry. It's, the 3.50 is made up of a dollar fifty per ton for resolution of the change in law, plus $2 per ton for the ability to divert the 600 tons from Sunshine. So again, provisions of six months' notice, et cetera. So we will have to come back to you with contracts with either El Sabrante or Avonall, and the council would have to take a final act in actually diverting it. That will give us the opportunity to resolve many of the issues that have been brought up, such as air impact mitigation, such as transportation issues, particularly to Avonall, such as whether a landfill is lined or not, et cetera. So those details are not before you today. What is before you today is a permissive amendment that resolves the change in law issues and allows the Bureau of Sanitation to enter into negotiations with the other two landfills to bring back to you the actual final deal to divert the 600 tons.
Thank you. I think it's important to note here that as we began this process last summer, there were those that said the sky would fall if we dared do this. There were threats it was going to go to $40, $45 a ton, $30 million. But the policy hung very strong together. And the council said very clearly, we have a policy, we're going to live by it, we expect our departments to live by it, and we sent Mr. Miller and the negotiating team in there with very clear instructions that we wanted 600 tons and the best price we could get. And that is what Mr. Miller did, and I want to personally commend you and President Garcia, Garcia, why do I, because you talk more, better Spanish than the mayor does. Garcetti. I did that last week, too. President Garcetti for holding firm in the negotiating process. And as I said all along, we're the biggest customer they have in America, the biggest customer in the city of LA. They're not going to throw us out simply over these issues. And we held firm, and I commend both of you for that negotiating success. When you look at a negotiation, there's always a little pain to bear on both sides. There can be no doubt that we're going to pay a little bit more, but we're getting what we wanted. And what we wanted is a very firm statement that we have a five-year process to get out of Sunshine Canyon, that we're taking the very first step today. We began the second step in committee the other day, and that's part of what we're going to be discussing in the next few months, its second step, and that's 1,000-ton reduction in next year. And those processes are now in place. And with this contract today, we are firmly on the road to sustainability. We are firmly on the road to getting out of Sunshine Canyon. We are firmly on the road to what this council wanted, and that is a greener, better city of Los Angeles. So I commend Mr. Miller and President Garcetti for their, for their strong efforts to get us on that road and make those very positive statements. Again, what is important here is the net, net cost. The real cost of this is going to be around $3.4 million. Not $30 million as of last summer's guess, not the $20 million that one company was saying it was going to cost, but $3.4 million to actually do this in this coming year. And that is a truly great success. It's a little pain we will all bear, but it does what we need to do. And it finally says that we're going to begin down the road to finding alternatives to landfill, and they're going to be environmentally sensitive. I want to thank Ms. Perry, who's, I hope she's in the room somewhere, but Ms. Perry, Mr. Weezer, for bringing up those environmental issues. And Mr. Garcetti will talk about that in a moment, as we talk about the air pollution and the way we're going to solve those issues. But what came out of this process was a very lively, vibrant discussion of trash in the city of LA. And I think more people around this horseshoe now understand the perplexities that go along with disposing of trash are not very simply saying, we're going to put it there instead of here. It is not just a simple shell game. It is very complex. And every, every action you take, there is another reaction somewhere, whether it's in the budget or whether in the operations of the bureau. There's reactions to every move we make. And I think what we've crafted over the past year is a good policy that recognizes all those reactions and what they truly will be to the operation side as well as the financial side. I believe this is a great deal for the Los Angeles people. I think it's a great deal for the San Fernando Valley. And I can commend once again, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Miller, for bringing us this proposal. I think it's a, it's a well-timed proposal. It's a well-thought-out proposal, and it takes into account all of those issues that nine months ago, most people had no clue even existed. And I also want to welcome our new grandmother back to the city hall, Ms. Han. Congratulations on our newest grandbaby. Glad to have you here.
Don't call me grandmother. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Madam President. And Ms. Han, you're way too young to be a grandmother. I just don't believe it. I don't believe the stories.
You're a third, right?
You're a mother's mother. Never a grandmother. Colleagues, I rise today in support of Mr. Smith and of this proposal. And I ask for your attention, and I ask also for your unanimous vote today on something that is very important. What we put before you today is something that some will say doesn't go far enough, and others will say goes way too far. But what we have before us after some excruciating negotiation, which was clearly directed from this council, not just a few weeks ago, but also over the last two years and indeed the last four and a half years that I have served here, which builds on a foundation of a number of people's work, Mr. Smith most notably, but Ms. Perry as our chair of our Environmental, Energy and Environment Committee, the work of a number of valley council members, Mr. Parks stewardship of our budget, Ms. Han's experience in this industry, Mr. Reyes's powerful speeches on social and environmental justice. What we have before us today, I think, is something that is the right foot forward and something that very clearly says that the cost of inaction is too great, that the cost of doing business as usual is too great for us not to do this today. I want to divide my remarks today into four categories, two of which I will do this time, and I'll press my button again for the next two. The first is cost, and the second is environmental impact. Mr. Weezer brought up a lot of the environmental points that I think were near and dear to our hearts, and we thank him for asking the questions that were on many of our minds. And the environmental issues are not easy ones to clearly talk about one direction or another, because moving trash from one place to another has effects, moving trucks from one place to another has an effect. We live in a common air basin, and we certainly live in a place where we share the roads and we share many of the facilities for the disposal of our trash. But in speaking to the costs, I want to lay out very clearly what it is that you're voting on today, because Mr. Parks laid out very clearly to us what we can afford to do. I think we feel very strongly, those of us who have served on the budget committee and all of us around this horseshoe, what is the only responsible things to do. There are some who are going to say this is $3.50 more per ton. Technically, they are correct, but I want to spell out as clearly as I can that a dollar fifty of that at least is what we would have owed, no matter what action we take today. In fact, BFI put before us that we owed them 2.50 per ton more because of additional costs that they believe legally they could pass through. And our city attorney, not at this level necessarily, confirmed, and we all believe that some of those costs will and should have been passed through. So to count all of this because of the diversion would be wrong. We have those costs in place because there is a legal obligation to do that. So if BFI put for 2.50 a ton is what they were owed, no matter whether we put 3,000 or 3,600 tons there, paying 2.50 more per ton is a differential of about a dollar to their offer, which means when you compute the number of tons, about $800,000, a little under $800,000 more than what BFI was saying they were owed anyways with the reduced amount of trash. That's important. So about $800,000 there. On top of that, which we are not voting on today, but we have clearly indicated and empowered the CLA's office and Sanitation Bureau to negotiate, is where the 600 tons will be diverted to. And we believe that that cost will be somewhere in the neighborhood of 1 million and a half to 2 million. So overall, what we're looking at is somewhere, in terms of additional cost, of about 3.5 million max, as low as about 2.5 million, which is a small price to pay for taking the step forward that we need to show that we can do in order to continue the progress towards our own policy of a further reduction next year of 1,000 tons, which we believe we can probably achieve through recycling and reduction. My time is up, so I'll press my button again. Are there other speakers on the cue, Ms. Perry?
Yes, there are, Mr. President.
Okay, I will press my button, and we'll get to the environmental things next. And I may, you may have to indulge me three times, but I want to lay out this very clearly for folks. This is also an environmental gain for us, and I will be detailing that next. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Padilla?
Actually, before I ask my questions, I'm happy to defer my time back to Mr. Garcetti to walk us through technically, you know, what's before us. Is there a final vote? Have we written up contracts, et cetera? To walk us through what's before us.
Sir, thank you very much, Mr. Padilla, and I appreciate that. This contract that we have before us and we have circulating so that you can take a look at it, says essentially two things. One, it says that our overall cost for any tonnage, whether we put everything in Sunshine Canyon or whether we take out the 600 tons, costs us $2 more per ton. Sorry, 1.50 more per ton. Let me spell, 1.50, $1.50 more per ton because of additional costs that legally BFI has borne and that can be passed on to us as the users. There is no dispute about that, and that is negotiated. Mr. Miller was able to do a very good job of negotiating that. So 1.50 of what we're voting on today, on the amendments before us, even if we keep 100% of the trash in Sunshine Canyon, it'll cost us that much more per ton. The second part is saying if we decide to move 600 tons away, that'll cost $2 more. Now, as I stated, it's not necessarily $2. It's probably closer to a dollar more than what BFI originally said we owed them. So if you look at that overall package, it's 3.50 more per ton, but they were saying we owed 2.50 more because of additional costs, the liner, et cetera. The second part on the environment, it was, we heard very loud and clear, and Ms. Perry, as a member of AQMD, also helped initiate to make sure that we look at the emissions. We know there's an environmental good for moving some of this trash away from urban centers, and that is a core part of what we're doing today. But a second environmental thing, we want to be clear that some people have implied that somehow clean trucks that used to go to Sunshine will now become dirty trucks going somewhere else. That is false. There's not a single clean truck today going to Sunshine Canyon that this year will not continue to go to Sunshine Canyon. Right now, we have dirtier trucks that are transferring to Sunshine Canyon that will now go to a different place, to El Sabrante or to Avonall. These dirty trucks, we hope, and this was a part of discussion, can be negotiated into being cleaner trucks. So while it's longer distances, that will not only offset the overall emissions for the basin, but on top of that, and this is a very critical point, in our negotiations when we spoke with BFI yesterday, we have agreed that the wait time, which Ms. Gruel has brought up, of their trucks, of our trucks, and the overall emissions of the landfill will be reduced so that the impact for the air basin is a net gain. Also, in places like El Sabrante, part of the reason why we have looked at those is that they have done a very good job on reducing their air emissions. 231 pounds a day reduction of NOx recently because of alternative fuel vehicles that we believe should and will be the model for the Sunshine Canyon landfill as well. We want to reward that sort of behavior. That is why we have chosen the, at least El Sabrante, as one of the places that we are negotiating with for the diversion of part of the 600 tons. We also will accelerate something that we already need to do and that we have made great strides in doing, which is converting our fleet to clean fuel and dual-fuel trucks. And in doing that, we have the ability now by making sure that that moves forward more aggressively. I don't want the naysayers who say we shouldn't do this to say that's an additional cost that wouldn't have come otherwise. It is separate. It is separate from what we are voting on today, but we will accelerate that because we believe that is the right thing to do for our air and for our environment. So this is about exercising leadership, colleagues. It is about showing the way environmentally. And I will get to the context finally in my closing remarks of why this is so important. I appreciate, Mr. Padilla, you giving me the time to lay that out. I ask for your unanimous support today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Madam President. Could we ask Rita to come up if she's here? Sanitation, Bureau of Sanitation? First, I want to say I'm absolutely delighted that our council and its leadership have come to this point. When I first came on the council eight months ago, the gun was to our head by BFI, and nobody really thought, what could we do about it? It's always been that way, and every time we talk about it, it ends up being that way, and the city ends up with no options, and there we go again. Well, the leadership of Mr. Smith and everybody else around the horseshoe has changed the dynamic, and here we are today in a completely different mode. First of all, Rita, I'd like you to bring us up to date on our recycling efforts, our plans, our visions, our dreams as to what we're going to do to stop putting so much of our garbage in landfill, but actually separating it and doing what we should do from an environmental standpoint.
Okay.
Hold my time.
Rita Robinson, Bureau of Sanitation. Well, with the support and the help of your leadership, the mayor's leadership and an incredible staff, which I have to commend. I know that we've commended Jerry and the council for all your leadership and Mr. Smith, of course. However, I have to say that I have one of the best teams in the world working on this issue from the Bureau of Sanitation. And with their continued work, we've been working on multifamily recycling, a clarification of recycling, you know, working on a food waste pilot project that we'll commend and we'll report on that in the future and other ideas, which we'll come up with ideas that will help people understand how to do recycling even better and moving mainly from the black bin to the blue bin. And so all of these ideas will come together and they're all moving in a direction that within the next six months you'll have even more results with regard to a reduction in the amount that we have to take to landfills in the future.
The 700 independent contractors, is that what we have besides our own city trucks?
Yes.
Those 700 independent contractors, are they now on notice? And if they're not, we want to put them on notice right now, that they have to begin to go forward with the recycling plan within their businesses.
Right.
Are you optimistic about that?
I'm optimistic that many of them will come on board. I mean, I think it's just like changing people's behavior, just like anything else. You begin to get them involved in the project and as we begin closer to educating them and seeing how it can be a benefit to them, then that is what makes people's behavior change. And that's exactly what we like to do with our businesses and with our constituents.
And how long will it take before we get them all together and you can say to us on the city council floor that the city of Los Angeles is 100% at recycling, not just the single family units, but the multifamily units and the commercial?
By 2008 was the commitment we made and we're moving ever closer to that in increments.
And when we get to 2008, we will put less garbage in landfills?
Absolutely.
And we'll actually make some money off of the recycling concept?
Absolutely. That's, I mean, that's the entire name of the game. If the bottom line shows a profit, that's what makes people want to do these programs. And we'll also be rolling out our Recycling for Dollars program on Earth Day, which will begin to get the constituents excited about competing to recycle, which is what we want them to do, giving them incentives to recycle.
And colleagues, those of us who might be around this horseshoe in four or five years from now, when this whole business comes back into it, you will be giving us periodic updates.
Oh, absolutely.
So that the options for us as a great city will continue to grow.
There are a lot of things in the queue between the URS contract with regard to waste to energy ideas. We're going to have our solid, we're kicking off our Solid Waste Integrated Resource Program, which will engage the community in finding solutions for the future. Instead of imposing things on people, which is what the public doesn't like, we'll engage them in a discussion of how to deal with their waste. You know, and I think it has to be an ownership situation. It can't be us speaking down to them. If they're involved in the discussion of the fact that we have 3,000 tons of trash a day, how do we suppose that we environmentally deal with it? That will engage all of the groups, whether they're businesses, individuals, students, everyone will take a role in that discussion and that will give us a report that will give us the ideas that the public feels are important for us to move forward on.
Excellent. Well, we appreciate your fine work and especially Mr. Smith for his leadership here in the council. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. If I could ask everyone on either side of the chair to keep their voices down. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, as we go through this discussion, and I appreciate the thoroughness of the detail and I understand that the notion of where the future lies and how we start transferring, where we transfer. Ms. Robinson, in looking at our city layout, we have certain districts that are 14 square miles with 250,000 people. We have others that are over 50 square miles with the same number of people. Now, does that also translate into an amount of trash or is there a way for us to start gauging if each council district will start accepting sites for these transfer points? I don't want to call them incinerators. What do we call them?
Waste energy facilities, I think is.
Waste standard facilities?
More acceptable.
Well, are we at a point where we can start talking about what these facilities would look like in terms of scale, size, levels of impact and noise and smell?
Well, the URS is our consultant that's been working with this.
Please hold my time.
URS is the consultant that's been working on this and they've been approved by the council and are currently engaged in that study of what kinds of facilities would work based on the kind of technology we're looking forward to, which then will lead to the type of facility that might be recommended under those, under that procedure. So you'll have a chance to see what kinds of facilities, what kinds of noise, what kinds of impact in the pollution situation or the environment that all types of technologies could drive up.
How will we account for the imbalance of size of districts and number of people per district? Because that also speaks to density. There's certain parts of the city that have 40,000 people per square mile and other parts they have 7,000. There's a different sense of luxury, comfort, openness, that also is reflected in how much debris and trash is generated. So how are we accounting for those imbalances or are we?
Well, I think the consultant is going to take into consideration a number of factors that could impact how we deal with waste to energy and many different, we're learning from different countries how they have approached the problem because they have the same kind of situation in their countries. I think they'll be able to come to the table. I don't think we're ready right now to have those discussions, but I think there will be a very elaborative amount of collaborative discussion about the types of individuals, the types of waste streams, the types of environments that we're dealing in and how these facilities could work in the city of Los Angeles in different locations. So I think that your concerns are well taken and certainly we've been taking notes on those over the time. So we've asked our consultants to take into consideration the density and the diversity of the city with regard to waste and then how that would translate into a waste to energy facility program in the future that we'll bring to you for discussion.
I think a significant link we need to make is as I bring this zoning issue to committee, if we can get those standards, if we can get those impacts in writing so that my colleagues can see the relationship between the zoning patterns of their respective district and the type of facilities that are being considered so that we can start talking about location. We all know and everyone's going to say, why put it across the street from my property or my home? We're going to have many of these discussions exponentially evolve because of that very simple question of where will they go? The neighborhood councils should start understanding what these impacts are because I know they want to weigh in. The last thing you want to hear from that stakeholder group is why are we told in the last minute, no one informed us? And the last piece is essentially the route patterns. Every development project that goes through the city has a haul route. Let's look at this as a giant haul route for each facility that goes through our district. And again, what impacts will be made there? I want to support my colleagues and their efforts, but I think these are the real issues, real impact type questions that affect our communities, especially when you have such a disparity in density and geographic size of districts and what that really means. And I think we'll need another round of discussion as to how we balance out the playing field given the existing disparities. So I appreciate your hard work and your staff and you're right, we have one of the greatest staffs in the world dealing with these issues. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Zein.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember Greg Smith, you stood up to them and I want to commend you. If you hadn't led that battle, I don't know where we'd be at this particular junction. It's been going on for many, many years, as you know, from sanitation. It's been the landfill, whether it was the one off the 405, which is now, I think it's Mountain Gate, which was the previous landfill, Bradley landfill, Sunshine. We've run out of space. But over the years, it's been ignored and it's just been pushed aside and until Councilmember Smith came around and stood up to them and said, we're not going to cave in and do it. I know this has been continued. Every time we look at it, it's the deadline, the deadline, the deadline. Mr. Miller, when was the last deadline before today?
February 28th.
The last deadline before today was two weeks ago, February 28th.
Okay, and every time we come to another deadline before that, it was months ago, as I recall.
Well, originally it was June 30th. They extended for six months, then they extended for another two months to February 28th and today is your deadline to rescind your action to the 28th, if that, you know.
So are we finally at that final, the last challenge to say we're in agreement, this will move forward for the people of the San Fernando Valley, the people of Los Angeles and address Mr. Reyes' concerns about how we're going to have those waste recovery or whatever we're going to call the technical term, which is basically a transfer station for the trash? All those issues will be resolved with this vote today, moving it forward, or are those still standing out there to be resolved?
Well, this vote today resolves the issue with BFI and allows you to enter negotiations on the 600 tons. All of the other issues that Ms. Robinson were talking about continue needing to come back to you. Those are multi-year, large, complicated, so you'll be hearing a lot of those in the future.
So the bottom line is today, we will take care of the issue with 600 tons going to another site, not Sunshine, which will live to our commitment to the people of the San Fernando Valley, in particular those near the 118 freeway, Gennaro Hills, Porter Ranch area. For many years, the promise has been made that we're going to stop in addition to the traffic that's been going up there. So 600 tons will be diverted to those other locations, but the other factors still have to be resolved.
Exactly.
And the other question is the 600 tons that we're not going to put up in that landfill, is that going to then open the door for other communities to then go into that area and dump 600 or plus tons into that landfill? Or are they going to agree that we're not going to put 600 tons in, we're going to start phasing in the other direction? Or are we going to then see for that community the same number of trucks, if not more, dumping more trash into that landfill?
They would have the ability to replace that 600 tons with trash from other jurisdictions. Essentially, that will be their business decision. They may do nothing, they may bank it and let landfill costs rise, but yes, they would have the ability to backfill that 600 tons.
So our commitment to the residents of the city of Los Angeles is we're living up to. But if another city decides to bring theirs into that particular facility, they could make a racial BFI and still do that. So the community would still be impacted with the trucks and the trash being dumped at that facility.
They could do that. That landfill is not going anywhere.
We have no control over that even though it's a city facility with city permits, et cetera.
Right.
They're a private business operating under the legal state standards, so that is a possibility if they wish to do that. So what they would then do, if they wish to do that, I hope they don't do that, to receive the revenues from the 600 or plus tons that they want to bring in, plus the difference in what they're going to lose in finances from us or maybe break even, but they could financially benefit from this.
They could.
And the community would then lose. As far as our commitment, though, we're living up to our word.
Well, they could. I will say also, from the city standpoint, though, as Mr. Garcetti mentioned, this also resolves what potentially could be a much larger liability on this whole change of law issue.
Right.
So irrespective of what happens at Sunshine itself, from the city taxpayer standpoint, this is a resolution to that point of the deal, which is very positive.
I've got one more final question. The life expectancy of that, how many more years till that is the capacity? Sunshine?
Twenty to...
Twenty to 25.
Twenty to 25.
Twenty, 25 years and that's that capacity, then it would be finally closed.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, this sounds good, but the question I have is again more technical. I think Mr. Garcetti gave us the overview. Today, we're voting on what? Are we going to have to come back for additional votes next week on specific contract language or contract documents? Can you walk us through the technical next steps here?
Sure.
Something that's approved today. Hold my time, please.
Today, you are voting on what amounts to a permissive amendment that does two things. One, it resolves the change of law issue. Again, their claim is $2.60 a ton. This would resolve it at $1.50. The second portion of what you would be doing today is approving a permissive contract that would let the council divert 600 tons per day to alternate landfills. This is not a final action on those. We would have to have contracts, as instructed last week, we'd have to bring back contracts to you with El Sabrante and with Avonall and show the terms of that contract and give you final costs, et cetera. And the council would have to take a further action to actually divert the tonnage. But what today would do would allow us to enter the negotiations and bring that back.
So it's more instructions to you that we're voting on today?
That's right. Instructions to you and the resolution of the change in law claim.
Okay. And then you'll be back next week or sometime very soon with the final language and the final documents to reflect these changes. Colleagues, I'm, although not thrilled about this because, well, Mr. City Attorney?
Councilmember Christopher Westhoff, Public Works General Counsel. You will be authorizing the Board of Public Works to sign the amendment that will implement the changes. So you actually will be approving the amendment. The amendment's being copied back as I speak. It's in very rough form. I made some changes this morning that were acceptable to BFI that don't change the deal but just got some better language in there to protect.
Well, that's why I ask because nothing's ever final until you see the specific language. I haven't seen the specific language.
You will have the specific language, it's just in a rough form and...
I appreciate that, but look, I'm looking out for the council here, colleagues. Several of us have spoken on this already, but yet we haven't seen the specific language in front of us. It's part of my ongoing frustration where a couple of weeks ago, I stood here and said, what are we doing? We're entering a five-year extension contract first and negotiating second. It seemed backwards to me. So I'm glad to hear that we've gotten some positive movement from the ongoing discussions and negotiations. Don't get me wrong. And when I see the specific language, and maybe I'll feel a little bit better about it, I want to continue to be supportive. I'm inclined to vote for this today, but I also want to put it back in the context of the big picture. It's not that I'm thrilled that we haven't voted to get out of Sunshine when we have two viable alternatives now to Sunshine Canyon. But that being said, if this council has already voted to extend the contract by five years and there's a way to begin to divert trash from Sunshine, then of course I'm going to be for that because every bit helps here. But I would like to see the specific language. And also just wanted to point out, colleagues, we were told at some point, just several weeks ago, a couple of months ago, that this couldn't be done, that there was no way that the contract was the best deal we can possibly get for the city. And it took the council members to get personally involved and credit should be given to Mr. Smith, to Mr. Garcetti, to Mr. Parks and others that finally extracted these concessions that people said were not possible.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla, and I think you make an excellent point. The amendment is a little detailed just because of legal language, so it is being copied as we speak, but it is exactly as I laid it out and as Mr. Miller laid it out as well. Let me give a few other thank yous. Cynthia Ruiz was part of this negotiating team as well, the president of our Board of Public Works, who is right over here. And I want to thank her personally for her great work on this as well with Mr. Miller as negotiating on behalf of the people of Los Angeles, not on the council's behalf, but as the people of Los Angeles. They did a very extraordinary job and Sharon So obviously worked very hard on this, Chris and Rita as well for your good work. I mentioned Mr. Smith before Ms. Perry. I wanted to thank Mr. Parks and Ms. Grule as well for being a big part of this and Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weesar for pointing out some of the land use and environmental issues. I also want to thank one other person without whom this wouldn't be possible and I know that he's taken some criticism about things that he said when he was a candidate, but this would not be possible without Antonio Villarosa. Not only is he living up to his word here in his support of this, but he is somebody who has been integral to making sure that we do business differently here in the city of Los Angeles and indeed making his campaign promise to make Los Angeles the greenest city that it can be. I want to give him my personal thanks as well for the discussions we had along the way and enabling this way forward to become a reality as well. In closing, colleagues, I again ask for your support on this. I just want to say extremely briefly because I think we've had good comments given, that the context for this is against the backdrop of the Renew LA Plan, which has become the policy here in Los Angeles. And without thinking forward with that, we would be having the same old tired discussion as before. And this is also about changing our relationship with BFI and with the companies that we do business with. Having a few different companies is a good thing, but also the discussion that we had yesterday, I wish everybody could have been there. It was a discussion in which we were talking about reducing the emissions overall in this landfill in a way that we couldn't have had a discussion about a year ago. In looking at the way forward, I said to BFI, I say this to Waste Management, I say this to any company, whoever wants to be the strongest partner to our bureau to achieve what we've seen up in San Francisco where food waste is part of their green recycling, to achieve a further reduction of our trash flow, as Mr. Reyes has shown the way with plastic bags with the Bureau of Sanitation. We want companies that will be partners in places where they are most aggressive, they will be most rewarded. And that's what changes this and that's why the context of this is so important. Colleagues, after all this hard work, thank you all for sticking to this. Thank you all for thinking this through. Thank you for guarding our budget. Thank you for making sure that we consider not only our environment, but the environment of the region. And I ask for your support today to make history and to show that we can do things differently. And it's my word as the president of this council, and I think I speak for everybody here, that this step is not a final step where next week we suddenly say, we did it, we don't have to think about it. It is just the beginning. And next week, when we start hitting the lines at Sunshine, we start hitting the emissions and we start looking at loans for small truck operators to be able to convert their trucks to clean fuel, as we look at Mr. Rosendahl's and other people's motions to make sure we get to 100% recycling and multifamily. This is finally the thing that has gotten us off the dime and will have moved us forward and we'll be a cleaner, a greener and a better financial city for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Again, if I could ask everyone on the sides to keep their voices down. And before we take our vote, we have one speaker card from Mr. Scott Schreiber. Who? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. Before Mr. Schreiber comes up, Councilwoman Grule.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and my apologies. I was on my way from an event, but I did listen on the way here this morning to the discussion. And I think that there's been lots of discussion about what this contract means, does it mean our dependence on landfills and really about our kind of withdrawal from dumping in Sunshine Canyon. And I think today is the beginning of the end for Sunshine Canyon, and it allows us to look at options on where we can put our refuse, as we talked about a week ago, and the importance of having options and leverage and the direction which we want to go in. And I think it was Mr. Rosendahl who was saying earlier, so I was listening in the car, about the fact that Mr. Smith really brought us a plan where there had been a lot of talk and no action in the past. And what we have today is something. And thank you to Jerry and Rita for providing us with some of those alternatives and the financial implications for that. I have talked about, one of the things that I grew up in the Grenade Hills area, and in fact, used to go to Sunshine Canyon when I was a little girl, when we would take things that we now don't dump, thank goodness, in Sunshine Canyon from our homes. We do do that recycling and the importance of that. I, you know, have, a lot of people have talked about and had rhetoric about Sunshine Canyon, have had some challenges about where we're going, is this stopping at all? What it is, is sending a message that we have to look at alternatives. And I think that we are here for a day that all of us are going to be talking about what the future is of our city, the future of where we are going to dump our trash, how we're going to recycle, and that we're going to continue to reduce our dependence on landfills, and that all of us, not only the city of Los Angeles, but residents in the city of Los Angeles, have to do their part as well to end our utilization of dumps and our dependence on dumps. So this has not been an easy task for any of us. We have talked more trash in the last six to eight months than we would probably like to, but it is a critical issue facing our city. We've come up with an alternative that I believe can limit our dependence, but also be responsible as we move forward. So just a thank you to all of you, and a thank you to my colleagues who have taken leadership in letting me sneak in for a moment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Cardenas.
I'll be brief. I'd like to ask Councilmember Smith a question. I'd like to ask Councilmember Smith a question about the Renew L.A. Committee. I just want to make it clear, there are a lot of people listening, there have been a lot of people wondering what we're doing in the city of Los Angeles. The action today, does that mean the Renew L.A. Committee will no longer meet?
No, the Renew L.A. Committee is going to go on long after we're all gone. It's going to be a process that will go over about 20 years as we phase into all the elements of it. And some of those are two-decade-long processes. So it'll continue. During the next year, its mission will be to how we find that next thousand tons for next year, its compliance and how it conforms to the contract we have. But let's just get that next thousand tons out, and we've already started that process.
So the process that we embarked on this particular council is, this is just the very beginning. And for lack of a better way of putting it, this isn't even the finest moment about this whole issue. This has been a tough, tough issue. There's a very difficult place for us to be. But in the future, we're looking at having real victories when it comes to diversion away from landfills, period, and getting into other alternatives on what we're doing with our disposal, right?
Yeah, and I think that's a correct analysis, that this is just one big element of it, but the biggest elements are yet to come, and that'll be creating some conversion technologies, some trash to energy, and then how we get that other diversion out to more recycling and more reuse. And that's the charge of the committee over the next year and so. That's really going to be the meat of what we're going to do there. And I thank you for bringing that out for those that are listening.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, for those of you listening on this issue, this is just the very beginning. We have a lot more work to do, literally thousands and thousands of tons of trash a day that we have to figure out what we're going to do with, and today is just the very beginning. Thank you, Mr. Smith, on your good work.
Thank you very much. Last speaker is Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I'd just like to say thank you to Mr. Smith, that a year ago, I didn't think we'd be here at this point. And for everyone that's worked on negotiation, and Jerry and his staff, and Sharon, the only issue I have, and I think it's far better than I ever thought we'd be at in the sense of moving forward on this trash issue. But one of the two things I'd like to make sure as we move forward is that we find, in the budget process, an ability to earmark some funds to make this next 500 tons plus a diversion effort to where we start investing in the technology over the next five years. I don't believe, and I don't have the right terminology, the two funds that are generated around the Sunshine are sufficient. So I think it's part of the issue that, to make this viable, that we've made this step, the only way to be able to look at in five years that we've actually made progress is we've invested in technology, and we ensure it's earmarked each year, and it may tie to some fees and all the other things, but we need to make sure of that. The only other issue is, and the second phase that we'll be dealing with on the contracts, I just want to make sure that we do have some flexibility, because we are on brand-new territory of using two new companies, that we do have some flexibility there to ensure that if one fails, that we have the ability to immediately move to where we can get our 600 tons handled by one or the other. So we need that flexibility, so that there is no red light day where Rita wakes up and says, oops, we can't get over the grade or the truck broke down. So again, those are the two things I have a concern with, and thanks, Mr. Miller, for all the efforts you had in pulling this together, and Rita and your staff. Certainly appreciate what you've done, and I think we're on the way. But without an annual plan in the budget to start funding the technology, then we've just put ourselves in a situation that five years from now, we'll be debating the same thing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. One other point of information I forgot to give you, colleagues. Mr. Zine asked the question about what happens when, if other people come in. It probably won't, they won't all come in the first year, but it is important for us to understand financially, when other people come in, we get a tipping fee, which is potentially in the millions of dollars, which will probably be a big part of offsetting any additional costs at all. So it's just important for us to remember, we don't get a tipping fee on other people, I mean, on our own, but we do get them on other people. Mr. Zine, you had a follow-up question on that real quick?
Just a follow-up. We do have the ability to restrict certain weight vehicles on certain roadways. And I don't know if that would be an avenue we'd want to pursue if we wanted to limit the truck traffic that goes into that area for the convenience of the neighborhood. So there may be some other options that we'd have also. Thank you.
That's a very good point, and we'll make sure we follow up with that. Okay, colleagues, we have now before us the amendment that has been circulated to this contract. We have two items. We have item 27 that has also been taken up that is before us. Again, colleagues, we have to finish the negotiations on that, but we know where that sweet spot is, and we feel very confident that we can hit it. That is where the diversion of the 600 tons of trash will go to. So it'd be my recommendation on 27 to hold this, to continue it, and to take up our additional item number 32 as amended today. Okay?
Mr. President, excuse me, is there a date on item number 27 to continue that for two weeks?
Mr. Miller, what do you think?
My suggestion would be upon notification by BOS and my office. That's going to involve negotiating with the other landfills.
Okay, we'll continue it until, for too date uncertain right now.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but the clerk needs a date.
Okay, why don't we make it two weeks then?
How about 30 days?
Okay, let's make it 30 days. Okay, till the 18th of April, is that correct?
Yes, April 18th.
Okay, April 18th, we will continue that too, if there's no objection. Okay, Mr. City Attorney?
And just to make a clear record, that the person who put in the public speaker card has now declined to speak.
That's, yes, we have opened and closed the public comment card on 32. Scott Schreiber has yielded his card. Okay? Please prepare the roll on the item and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved, and we'll go forthwith on that. Yes, Mr.?
Mr. President, if it pleases the council, I'm going to be gone on that day on a trash conference, actually, in Sacramento. If we could put it off to the 21st, I think, it'd be Friday.
Okay, let's make that the 21st then. We'll continue that till then. Okay, thank you all very much. Appreciate that. We now will return to our presentations and recognize Mr. Wesson right now, and then we'll be returning after presentations to public comment and the rest of the agenda. Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. If I could ask Mr. Cardenas, Tony Cardenas, to join me. Today is Adopt a Pet Day. We've got Ed Boakes, our manager, and we've got a beautiful Irish setter mix. Just look at him. I'm proud to say, we're still Mr. Cardenas. I'm proud to say that, up to this point, every animal that we've presented on our Adopt a Pet program has been adopted. This animal, his name, walk him around so he can be seen. They found him, or he was in the East Valley Shelter. He was found in Mr. Tony Cardenas's district. It's fitting that today being St. Patrick's Day, that the dog's name is Patrick. And we really want to find Patrick a home. He's had his shots, he's healthy, he's been microchipped. If you're interested in Patrick, call 888-452-7381. Patrick, if you look at him, you can see that he's a little thin. He needs some tender, loving care. He needs somebody to bring him home. He's good with kids and fattening him up a bit. Mr. Cardenas, you want to help me find a companion for this puppy?
In the spirit of St. Patrick's Day, let's get this Irish setter adopted. He kind of looks a little bit like Tom Labonge. He's, what I mean is, he's handsome, Tom. Just look at him. Just look at him. He's beautiful, maybe a councilman with a big backyard or something like that out there in the valley might want to adopt him, or, as you can see, he's very friendly, probably very friendly with children as well. Look at that. He loves green. He's definitely Irish. What do you say? Do you think we're going to get him adopted?
Of course, we'll get him adopted. And for those who are interested, please call 888-452-7381. And if you call and Patrick is already adopted, we have hundreds of other animals, so you will not be disappointed. We've got six shelters within the city. Somebody, please give Patrick a home. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, fellas.
In the Irish spirit, we next have the great Tom Labonge to lead us on a special St. Patrick's Day celebration.
When Irish eyes are smiling. Okay, thank you very much, and good morning, everybody. This is St. Patrick's Day, and I'm pleased to have with me the great Terry Anderson. Terry Anderson, for many years, from the Irish-American community, has been a stalwart in promoting this great civic event. Terry, a few words, please.
Hello. Happy St. Patrick's Day to everybody. We were told we have to move rather fast.
Yes.
All righty. So let me first introduce to you today, let me first note, there are a couple people in the room who have been a big supporters of the Irish fair. I want to thank Councilman Cardenas, I want to thank Kevin Regan, and I want to thank Tom Labonge, honorary mayor. All right, thank you there. Let us first introduce the Honorary Irish Council of Ireland, Mr. Finnbar Hill.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Mr. President, councilmembers, benachtine feilaf, podrigar of Galeris, min love gominisiv, sult agus evnes asen la mornan eilsho. Ireland is going through an extraordinary change culturally, economically, and socially. It has gone from a country in my time of immigration to a country of net immigration, a country that in the last eight years has created 500,000 jobs, a country that has 40 million Americans who claim Irish heritage every day of the year, and about 200 million more who claim it today as St. Patrick's Day. We have immigrants from America, from Poland, Lithuania, Latvia, and Estonia in particular that have joined us and have brought to Ireland new insights into the immersive and valuable diversity we find when we open our doors to others. However, what is important is the links between America and the United States.
And Mexico.
And Mexico.
That's right. Good job. All right. Good job.
Over 600 companies, over 600 U.S. companies are employing over 100,000 people in Ireland, and the total investment is $73 billion. It is almost five times the U.S. investment in China. And for our part, we have 300 offices of various Irish companies throughout the year and employing 500,000 people. So our ties continue to be strong, and we are enjoying a wonderful economic development. Immigrants from Ireland today flee no more from power of arms, nor compelled by tyranny at home, but because they have that most important capital of all, intellectual capital. Enjoy St. Patrick's Day. Let's drink responsibly, let's party well. Gormina mahag.
Thank you very much. Good job. I liked that, Council General. And now, a great one here, Sal Castro, who's going to tell about the Great Irish Brigade real quick and about his own thing.
Well, about my own thing is not my thing. HBO is showing the movie Walkout, 8:00 p.m. Saturday night. It's about the brave kids in East L.A. that really opened up, that began the civil rights movement, civil rights movement, the Chicano civil rights movement. That's why you see a lot of brown faces in this city council today.
And you're marching in the parade.
Hell, yes, I'm marching in the parade. I'm representing the Batallón de San Patricio. I'll give a little story. As a history teacher, there was a famine in Ireland in the 1840s. A lot of families came to the United States. The young men were recruited into the army. All of a sudden, the war against Mexico, notice, against Mexico broke out, and then a lot of these young men very bravely fought for the United States Army. All of a sudden, they realized, here, here we are, Irish Catholics fighting against Mexican Catholics, to hell with it, let's go fight for Mexico. And they did, very bravely. Now, the sad thing about it is, after the war, most of them were rounded up and executed. However, a few got away. You've heard of O'Gorman, O'Higgins. There's even a little town in northern Arizona called Benjamin Hill. Where the hell did Mexicans get Benjamin Hill? Anyway, I'm proud to be here representing el Batallón de San Patricios. Muchas gracias.
All right, Sal, good job. Now, back to Terry. Good job, Terry. Here we go.
All right. Now, we have some special presentations to make. We have the 47th International Rose at Trellee, who's Ireland's ambassador of goodwill to the world, from County Mayo and representing all of Ireland, Yvonne Sullivan. It's all in Gaelic.
Good job. Congratulations. Here we go. We'll take pictures later. Just saying hello from Ireland.
I'm delighted to be here today. It's fabulous to visit City Hall, and it's lovely to be an ambassador for Ireland here on Paddy's Day and for the Rose at Trellee International Festival. So everybody, enjoy yourselves. Thank you very much.
Our Southern California Rose, Ashley Stansberry, who will introduce all of the rose debutantes, one of which will be selected on Saturday night at the Sheridan Universal Grand St. Patty's Day Ball as the next Southern California Rose at Trellee. Let's have Rose Ashley Stansberry introduce the rose debutante.
Thank you so much, Terry. Happy St. Patrick's Day, everybody. Here's all these lovely girls behind me. One of these girls will take my place this August, representing our Southern California and Ireland, and hopefully be chosen to be the international rose, just like Yvonne. So thank you so much.
Now, we'd like to have the Irish Honorries of the Year. I'd like to have them come forward, receive their plaque.
Okay, here we go. Call about roll call. Here we go.
All righty. Lorraine Foley, standing contributor.
Wait, they got to come and get them. I'll get them there. Here we go. C. Griffin Healy. You call the next one.
Sister Emar Flood.
Sister Emar Flood, give her a hand there. Ollie Byrne. There you go.
Gemma McGinnis.
There we are. Margaret O'Carroll.
Jerry O'Keefe.
Lady loud.
Colette Shubert.
Reverend Hugh Crow.
That's all. That's all. They're not here.
All right, there. Let's give all these award winners a big hand right there.
Where's Father Crow?
Right here, Father Crow.
Colette. Scott Walton.
Let's give all the awardees a big hand right now. There's a few more. Join with us.
Terry, let me just mention, we have three awardees who are not able to, honorries who are not able to be here this morning. Reverend Monsignor Michael Lenahan, Ken O'Malley, an Irish musician, and Sister Eileen McGovern.
Thank you, Terry. And stand with me, but we'll hear, please welcome the great Mayor of the City of Los Please welcome the great Mayor of the City of Los Angeles, Mayor Antonio Villagosa.
Thank you, Councilmember Labange, and thank you, Terry Anderson, for your continuous efforts to bring an Irish-American tradition to the City Hall and the City of Los Angeles. When you think about the contributions of this great community, not just to the city, but to the nation, a nation built on the strength and of immigrants, a nation that in many ways was blessed by the incredible contributions of this community from the very beginning of our nation. And, you know, as an American and Mexican descent, I can tell you that many of us know about the San Patricio Brigades.
Indeed.
Yes. Yes, you know about them too. Yes, and not 1800s, 1848, as a matter of fact. But there's always been a strong connection. Thank you. Thank you very much. This is a happy day. This is a happy day. So today, we celebrate St. Patty's Day, and we wanted to acknowledge today with Councilmember Tom Labange and proclaim today Irish-American Heritage Month. And there are many whereasses here that talk about the story of the Irish here in America and the important part in the history of our country, the many contributions. The history of Ireland and the United States has always been deeply intertwined, and as we all know, that the great wave of Irish immigration, beginning in the 1840s and all the way into the 20th century, has done so much for this great country. And we're happy to know that now, for the first time in more than 100 years, Ireland is bringing people into Ireland instead of sending them around the world. We've been blessed, though, with that immigration. And as the great John F. Kennedy once said, when he spoke to the Parliament in Dublin and told the story of the Irish Brigade, a regiment that fought valiantly for the Union and suffered terrible losses, our country has been so blessed by this great community. So on behalf of my great colleague and friend, and a great booster of the City of Los Angeles, and a great Irish-American, Tom Labange, I'd like to proclaim today Irish-American Heritage Month.
All right. Here we go. Turn right there. Turn, Mayor, turn around. Get right up here. Rose, come up here, Rose. Get in here. We got to make it right. Come on.
Yes, we need it pretty. We need some roses to...
Got it right there. Dorothy, move over to the right. There we go.
Finally, finally, I just wanted to share with all of you, like Eric Garcetti, our council president, who loves to talk about all of the different heritage that he shares, I just want you all to know that I'm black Irish and that I am very proud of it. So thank you all so much.
Oh, Mayor, thank you, Mayor. Stay with me just for a moment, Mister Mayor. The final reports right here that we have right here, you know, the greatest immigrant to Los Angeles, I believe, I'm taking prejudice here, is the great William Mulholland, that Irish immigrant who came from Dublin. But please welcome this year's winner of the William Mulholland Civic Award, Assistant General Manager for the Department of Recreation and Parks, none other than Kevin Reagan. Congratulations, Kevin. Good job there. And furthermore, Mister Mayor, you join with all my colleagues here in honoring the Man and Woman of the Year, who made so much difference to the life of Los Angeles and their work. First, I'd like to ask Steve McDonald to join us here as Irishman of the Year. Steve McDonald has done many good things for this city in his work. Give him a big hand there, folks. And the great thing that he did, he worked a lot on Century Housing and getting housing and money together for Century Housing. He's worked for many, many years with Trust for the West. He's a graduate of Georgetown University. He's done great work for Sister Julia Mary and the Good Shepherd Center for Homeless Women. He's really a tyrant. He's raised $10 million. They're going for 13 million for their expansion of Phase 3. Let's hear it for Steve McDonald.
Well, thank you. This is a great honor for a great grandson of someone who came in 1840. But what a wonderful day. You're passing some green legislation. It's a green day. Everyone's wearing green. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
All right, I like that. That's a great speech, Steve. That's a good speech. Green Day, I got to tell that to Greg Smith. Mayor, you know this person. She's so special. I love her. If she wasn't a sister and I wasn't married, I may marry her, but I won't. Sister, I just kid you there. Here's somebody very special, the Irish Woman of the Year is coming up right now, Sister Jenny Lechtenberg.
Wait, Jenny. Councilmember Labange mentioned Sister Jenny, a great Irish-American, and the Irish Woman of the Year. Let's give her a big hand. But in the great tradition of Catholicism, of the idea of social justice, as we all know, a notion in our faith that is very important to us, Sister Jenny has been a caregiver, someone who understands that we're blessed when we give back, someone who has done an incredible job, an incredible job, working with kids in poverty, working with kids to give them the computer skills and the education skills, and more importantly, the hope that's so important for our young people. And I can tell you that if you're running for president or want to see best practices around the country, people come to East Los Angeles to see Sister Jenny's incredible initiative to bridge the... Yes, let's give her a big hand. To bridge the digital divide, to give young people and their parents the opportunity to a great education and the computer skills that are so important in these times. So Sister Jenny, we're so proud of you. I said I was black Irish, and I think you're, and you're German-Irish with a Mexican hue, right? That's right. So congratulations, along with Councilmember Labange.
And we're going to ask Councilmember Jose Huizar before we make the final presentation.
Thank you very much, and I certainly am very happy to stand here to give this recognition to a very special woman, an angel in the City of Los Angeles, who I've entrusted with my own daughter, four-year-old Amelia, who attends the Puente Learning Center in Boyle Heights, doing a tremendous job there, and just someone who takes small ideas and says that anything is possible, from the time she had a little trailer and an empty lot to now a beautiful facility that's providing so many learning opportunities for our children in Boyle Heights and all of Los Angeles. Sister Jenny, you truly are not only the Irish Woman of the Year, but an angel overlooking the City of Los Angeles. Thank you so much for the work you do.
Thank you, Mister Labange.
I begori. I've been talking to many other people from Ireland today, and I thought I better come in with a brogue, but in all honesty, you don't know me that way. But it is such an honor to be able to represent the Irish, I don't mean Notre Dame, I mean the other people from Ireland, but to hear these wonderful words from our mayor, who is certainly a man for all seasons, and more than that, he is becoming our man for all people, and we appreciate the work he does so much. Secondly, our councilman, Jose Huizar, who has done so much for our communities, both in the educational field and now as our elected councilperson. And Tom Labange, you're a man of courage, because anyone who can nominate a person for an Irish award with a name like Lechtenberg is really courageous, so...
Sister, you told me you were Irish. I never doubted words of sister. Hail Mary, full of grace. Here we go. Play the music. Let's salute the Irish Woman of the Year.
We have two other councilmembers who want to say something.
Oh, two other councilmembers.
So Ms. Grul and Mister Reyes. Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Mister Garcetti, and I just want to congratulate Tom, you, and everyone, Mister Mayor, for the acknowledgement today, and also to use this as somewhat of a commercial. Today is St. Baldric's Day for childhood cancer, and they look at, on St. Patrick's Day, we have representatives from our fire and police department, who this morning, one of the reasons I was late, who were shaving their heads today in honor of those children they're trying to raise money for, for St. Patrick's Day and St. Baldric's Day. So I'm making a plug, because anyone who is out there who would like to help contribute and to get their head shaved today at Fire Station 88th on Laurel Canyon, 89, excuse me, 89th on Laurel Canyon until noon today, we encourage them to go. It's been a great event, but it supports our wonderful St. Patrick's Day. So thank you very much, Mister President.
Thank you. Mister Reyes, and then Mister Zine.
I just wanted to stand and thank Sister Jenny for her tenacity. I recall back in the early 90s, banging on doors, getting Denver reared in to support the school, and to take in things, stuck to it, and now we see a great learning facility for future generations. So I just want to thank my colleagues for taking you to be honored today, for more for the future generation will benefit from all your hard work. Thank you for not giving up, Sister.
And Mister, and one other person's popped up, Mister Zine.
Mister Zine.
Mister Zine.
I brought my hat for you today for the parade that's going to take place downtown. Also, in the Santa Fernando Valley today, we have another St. Patrick's Day parade in Canoga Park, the All-American City, along Sherman Way. So today, everyone's Irish in Los Angeles, and I take my hat off to the Irish folks today. God bless you.
Put it back on. Thank you very much. Let's hear it for the Irish as we march out. Here we go.
We want to thank again the folks for their presentation on St. Patrick's Day. And next, I want, we have a second celebration, and I want to say especially, a special thanks to the folks who are waiting on public comment for today, and we will be returning to you just after this next presentation. It's a very complicated Friday since we had a couple days when we were lobbying in Washington, so we had a lot of business and still have a lot of business to do. Also, colleagues, in terms of the parade that's upcoming later today, we are in danger of losing a quorum later on, and we still do have a number of items to address, including the South Central Farmers and the 41st and Alameda property update. So I would ask folks to consider, please staying and not breaking quorum as much as is possible. Mister Wesson, yes?
Yes, Mister President, would this be an appropriate time for me to announce that my dog Patrick has already been adopted?
All right, congratulations.
Patrick has a home.
Wonderful. That's great. Let's reconsider the ordinances, if we may. There are, I think, four of them, Madam Clerk?
Yes, there's five of them. That would be items 2, 3, 28, 29, 30, and 31.
Okay, let's reconsider those. Please prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Those are before us. If nobody wishes to be heard, now that we have 12 members here, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote on those.
14 eyes.
And which one?
28.
28 will extend forthwith. Thank you very much. And should we take up the, does a special agenda, special meeting, excuse me, have a ordinance as well? I believe there's one.
Yes, it does. Item number two on this...
Please, let's recess the regular meeting. Please call the roll on the special meeting.
Cardenas, Grul, Han, Huizar, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosanel Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 14 members present and appom, Mister President.
Okay, first items.
First item is Budget and Finance and Personnel Committee reports.
Okay, let's remove the Budget and Finance if there's no objection to that. Please prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
And next items, that is approved. Next items are 2 to 4.
Next items, 2 and 4, public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Any, anybody wishing to be heard on those or call them special? Let's open and close the public hearing if there are no cards on that. And let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Okay, those are approved.
And number five of the special meeting is a potential closed session on the BFI contract.
Let's receive, let's receive and file that if there's no objection. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
That is received and filed. Okay, we will return back to the regular meeting now, and recognize for our next presentation, Councilmember Tony Cardenas, to celebrate another very significant special day here in Los Angeles. Mister Cardenas.
Thank you, Council President Garcetti. I'd like to first thank the Persian community for the beautiful flowers that you've seen at everyone's desk today. Thank you so much for the gift. I'd also like to give a special thank you to Amir Tabak, a good friend and employee of the City of Los Angeles, who just lost his mother recently. He went back to Iran for the funeral, and I just want to send our condolences to him and his family. But he continues to be a wonderful, hard-working individual, as he had much to do with getting today's event together and the festivities, even though he's had those personal losses. So thank you very much, Amir, for your dedication. It's a very proud moment for the City of Los Angeles, and I'm very proud to say that for the third year in a row, the City Council of Los Angeles is once again demonstrating its commitment to the core strength of this great city, which is cultural richness and diversity. We're doing this through recognizing the most important symbol of an ancient culture and a thriving community here in Los Angeles. The Persian-American community of Los Angeles and Southern California join us to celebrate Noruz, the beginning of Persian New Year. For thousands of years, Persians have celebrated the first day of spring, Noruz, as the coming of a new year signaling hope and promise of health, prosperity, and peace for all humankind. Noruz represents revival of nature and reinforcement of values. Many Persian-Americans are here at the chamber to celebrate this auspicious occasion. I now would like to ask them all to stand up and be recognized. As we just witnessed the demonstration of such a beautiful community, I think it's important for us to point out that this is a country of immigrants, and this Persian community is the most educated community ever to come to the United States. More bachelor's degrees... More bachelor-degreed, master-degreed, and doctor-degreed individuals have come to this country from Iran and other parts of the East, and I think it's very important for me to point out, it warms my heart to know that they have an overabundance of engineers who come here as well. So thank you for joining us. This city enthusiastically embraces all of her communities, and on a day when we are celebrating both Noruz and St. Patrick's Day, we're reminded of our similarities and not our differences. It's wonderful to see that Los Angeles is so diverse and that we can celebrate so many things in these chambers and throughout this city, and I think it's important for us to understand that this is a country of immigrants, and this is a country that warmly welcomes immigrants, as we've seen for hundreds of years, and I hope and pray that we continue to do that in this great country in years to come. The Persian-Americans over the past three decades have made leaps and bounds in assuming their place while sharing their heritage. We have moved from us and them to only us, and it's something that my Persian friends always remind me how proud and wonderful they feel to be in this most prosperous and giving an opportunity country that we do have. Thus hereby, in the City of Los Angeles, we are welcoming spring and Noruz and acknowledging her vibrant Persian-American community and wishing all Angelenos good fortune and many blessings in the coming year. Everyone is invited to join us at a reception in the rotunda immediately after this presentation, and at this time, we have the Mayor of Los Angeles, who would like to share a few words as well.
First of all, I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Tony Cardenas, who for a number of years now has welcomed the Persian community, the Iranian community, for Noruz. Thank you for bringing them to City Hall every year in the way that you have. This morning, I had the honor, I've said to them, I've participated in many events with this community over the years, at Balboa Park, in Westwood, in the homes of some of the people who are here with me today, but this is the first time that I got to welcome you for breakfast in the Tom Bradley Room as Mayor of the City of Los Angeles, and it's indeed an honor to be here to do that. And when you think about Noruz, the, not just the Persian New Year, it literally means New Day, the first day of spring, a celebration that, as Mister Cardenas has said, has been going on for thousands of years, one that in many ways is a new cultural contribution from Iran and the Middle East to Los Angeles and the United States of America. And as Mister Cardenas says, just as we have been blessed by the many contributions of Irish-Americans, this is a community that works hard, that plays by the rules, that's been an engine for the growth of the... been an engine for the growth of the textile industry, the jewelry industry, a highly educated community that is committed to ensuring that their children get a great education, and a community that we have all been blessed to be able to say they have the largest population here outside of Iran. And so I want to thank you and acknowledge you today and look forward to seeing you on April 2nd at Balboa Park. And Mr. Cardenas' district, he'll be there in his shorts and his tennis shoes. I'll be there as well. And I just want to say Aida, Hamé, Mubarak to all of you. Thank you so much.
It's wonderful to recognize the Persian community, but even though the City Council has only been recognizing Noruz for three short years, I think it's important for us to realize that the Persian community, the Iranian community, has been here for decades contributing and making this a wonderful city, a wonderful Southern California, and a prosperous and successful United States of America. And with that, I'd like to invite two people to the podium to speak, two employees of the City of Los Angeles who have been working here for decades. You can tell by the gray hairs that they have, and that's Mr. Andrew Edelman and Mr. Puriya Abassi. Please come forward.
Councilmember, I wish I had gray hair. Gray hair can be...
Just talking about me.
Okay. I have no... Honorable Council and Mayor, thank you for celebrating Persian New Year, Noruz. Persians are a very diverse group. They are Christians, they are Bahais, they are Muslims, they are Jewish, they are Zoroastrian, but they all celebrate Noruz. And much like the Irish community, whose St. Patrick's Day was celebrated just earlier, Persians came here and the Irish came here around the turn of the century, Persians came here in nineteen-sixties and seventies, and Persians have contributed to the culture, to sciences, to technology, and to the economy of this great nation. And we all love our adapted country. It is my pleasure to introduce to you some of the leaders of the community to speak a few words each. First, Mr. Isatullah Delijani. Mr. Delijani is elder and leader of the community. He is the past president of Jewish-American, I'm sorry, Iranian-American-Jewish Federation. And please welcome Mr. Delijani.
Good morning. Honorable Mayor Vieragosa, Mr. President, honorable City Council members and guests. Happy Noruz, Happy New Year. It's a great honor for me to congratulate everyone around the board who celebrates Noruz. I wish you all a life full of peace and happiness. I would like to express my appreciation to the City of Los Angeles, which recognizes and respects Noruz as a Persian New Year. Dear friends, Noruz, the new year of Iranian culture, is very unique among other nations' New Year. Noruz, the first day of spring, is a day of reborn nature, giving new life and hope and a new beginning for all of us. Noruz is not related to any form of religion, so Persians are, as Muslims, Jews, Christians, Bahais, Zoroastrians, consider this day as a new year. The tradition was started by King Jamshed, the king of Persian empire, few thousand years ago. Once again, I wish a Happy New Year to everyone, especially the resident of our great city, the City of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Next, there will be a few words from Mr. Varuj Abkhian, your Assistant General Manager, Bureau of Sanitation here in the City of Los Angeles. Good morning, Honorable Mayor Vieragosa, Mr. President, Honorable City Council Members, colleagues and guests. My name is Varuj Abkhian. First and foremost, I am extremely grateful to be a city employee for the past twenty-five years, unfortunate enough to be part of the Department of Public Works team that has worked hard and made a positive difference for the health and the environment of Los Angeles. I am a Persian-American, representing Armenian-Iranian constituents of that large community. We have lived in peace for generations in Iran, and now have chosen residence in Los Angeles. Armenians have been a well-respected minority in Iran, and for centuries have had the freedom of worship in our churches and enjoyment of our culture in our schools and institutions, just like we do now in the great Los Angeles. Noruz is about celebration of life. It is the renewal of life as the winter season comes out of its dormancy and hibernation and enjoys the warm sun of springtime. Celebrating life and its warmth and the diversity it offers is the joyful message of Noruz. Congratulations are due to our mayor and every one of our City Council members, especially Councilmember Tony Cardenas, who has recognized Noruz three years ago. Thank you for your leadership and renewed commitment in welcoming change and embracing As a city employee, on my first day of work, there were only two Persian-Americans in my office. Today, as a result of your leadership and policies, there are several hundred Persian-Americans, among other employees of different nationalities, who are proudly serving this great city and its well-deserving citizens. These days, there are controversial issues surrounding Iran. However, let me assure you that Persians are peaceful and loving people, and Persian-American citizens of this great city are committed to making a positive difference for the future generations of everyone in the city. May the Lord protect you from any harm, may he bless you with good health, and continue to guide you as you are the light that guides the best city in the world. Thank you and Happy Noruz. Next, we hear from Dr. Hamam Mahmudi, a prominent member of the Bahai community here in Los Angeles. Dr. Mahmudi.
Thank you very much. It's with great pleasure that I speak before you. The Bahai community internationally celebrates Noruz, despite what country they are from and what nationality they are. The Bahais believe in oneness of humanity, equality of men and women, and elimination of prejudices. I'm one of the fortunate few that came to this country in nineteen fifty-nine and has lived here, enjoying the liberty, equality of men and women, and I'm proud to be part of a community that believes in diversity and tries, that all of you try, to have a seamless society. Thank you very much.
Persian community is proud that Mayor Vieragosa has appointed one of our own as the Vice President of the Department of Foreign and Powers, Mr. David Nahay.
Thank you, Andrew. I'll be very brief. Let me first thank Mayor Vieragosa for a wonderful and heartwarming speech that he gave this morning at breakfast. I'd like to thank Councilmember Cardenas for having championed the cause of the Persian community here in Los Angeles a number of years ago and providing such leadership on this issue. And our sincere thanks to all of you for the proclamation today, for recognizing this community. Every immigrant community that comes to this wonderful city brings something of its culture with it, like a bright strand of color that weaves into the wonderful fabric that is Los Angeles. The Persian community is really no different. We've contributed much, we've gained much. But if there is one thing that symbolizes us, that represents us, it's Noruz, because it really is about the highest aspirations of human beings. It's about nobility, magnanimity, about familial relationships, about celebrating the bounties of nature. It's all about everything that is good in life. And we would like our American brothers and sisters to see us through the prism of this day. The Persian community has lost its homeland, but it's gained a home. And we celebrate Noruz today, not just as Iranian-Americans, we celebrate it as Angelenos. And it is our fervent hope that in years to come, just as we've all had such fun with St. Patrick's Day today and looked at all of the green, perhaps in years from now, we can all celebrate the wonders of Noruz as well. Thank you so much.
And finally, Mr. Puriya Abassi, Assistant General Manager of the Convention Center.
Honorable members, Mayor of the City of Los Angeles, once again, we have come before you to share the most celebrated event of our culture, Noruz, the first day of spring. I join my colleagues in wishing all Angelenos health, prosperity, and good fortune in the coming year. I made this spring the beginning of a re-energized effort to build cultural bridges between the nations of the world, to focus all that is good and to show compassion for those less fortunate. These are truly the pillars on which the tradition of Noruz has stood for thousands of years past and thousands of years to come. The Persian-American community has truly been blessed with opportunities that you have afforded us. We have indeed traveled a long path since the late seventies, evolving from an isolated group with difficult to pronounce names, peculiar accents, and customs lost in the oasis that we call Los Angeles. Today, we are part of you, resonating with the same passion for life, the same hopes for a better future, and the same gratefulness for opportunities abound. However, we will not forget that the Los Angeles tradition of acceptance and tolerance is not innate and has not been miraculously created. It has taken us twenty-seven years to be where we are today, because it took so many before us so long to be trusted and accepted. Today, we stand on their shoulders. We stand on the shoulders of the Irish and the Chinese who built the railroads. We stand on the shoulders of the Hispanic merchants, businessmen, farmers, and factory workers that built this economic giant. And we stand... And we stand on the shoulders of all others that come here with hopes of a better future prevailing over bigotry and discrimination to show the shining image of what a true metropolis can be. On this day of celebration, we hope that others will come and that we will be worthy enough of them standing on our shoulders. On behalf of our community, I extend most sincere appreciation to you in helping us and to not only build the bridge across cultures but across generations. I would also like to recognize and applaud Honorable Tony Cardenas for all that he has done for us on this council floor. You have shown us what an honor public service is and what a difference it can make. God bless, and with the Council President's permission, I would like to say a few words in Farsi, as this program is being broadcast worldwide via satellite, reaching many of the Farsi-speaking communities around the world. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas, just before, we've got four council members who want to give brief comments. I just want to also update the council. We have three different items, if you include public comment, that have sixty-three cards collectively on them. And I know that the parade has started for St. Patrick's Day, which lost a couple people. So as much as we can keep the comments brief, we'd appreciate that. We're very excited to celebrate this day with everybody. But Mr. Zain, Mr. Wesson, Mr. Reyes, Ms. Gruh, and Mr. Rosendahl, would each like to say something as well? Mr. Zain and Ms. Han now as well.
Good morning to you, to all of our city workers who are Persian descent. You have found that American dream. And just before this presentation, we celebrated the Irish celebration, St. Patrick's Day. And I don't know where in the world you would find people from different cultures coming together and having a celebration under one roof in one city hall, other than the United States of America. That is a tribute to America. I am the National League of Cities Immigration Task Force Chair. Immigration is a huge issue in this country. It's a huge issue in Los Angeles. And what you folks represent is what everyone who's come to this country wants to represent, is that American dream, reach that rainbow. God bless you. Welcome to City Hall. We look forward to the wonderful rice and the wonderful delicacies that you're going to present today, because I know the food is outstanding. Have a wonderful day. Thank you very much for being here.
Mr. Wesson. Our next speaker is Mr. Wesson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I will be brief. I'm glad that the mayor participated in today's program and that my colleague, Tony Cardenas, has done this for three years. But I want to say this, look at those three beautiful young girls. Let's just give them a round of applause. And Mr. Cardenas and my colleague Dennis Zain is absolutely correct. What makes this country great is that we can all come together and live side by side and work together to make this city the greatest city that it can be. And I also, yeah, I'll take the applause. Give me a mercy applause. I also want to stand to commend you on your strength. People have to realize the hell that you went through in the seventies, when your government was just totally changed. People have to realize and remember the war in the eighties that cost lives of so many of the young people, but yet somehow, some way, you came here, you're doing fine, and you're part of a community that I truly believe is a great community. And when I personally asked for individuals to help me change the face of the district that I represented, when I asked for businesspeople to come in, when I said, "When you go south of the Tin Freeway, it's okay," it's this community that believed me, and it's this community that is building great projects in the district that I represent. Happy New Year to all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. And congratulations as well on a stellar performance last night, Mr. Wesson. And Mr. Reyes is our next speaker, to be followed by Ms. Gruh.
Thank you, Council President. I just rise to thank you for bringing the tradition and the symbolism of Noruz to the city. In particular, for example, the Delijani's and their investment in our city. When you go to Los Angeles Theater, when you look at the wonderment of the architecture, the beauty of the theaters, it's a sacrifice of stewardship that's been demonstrated by the family. I want to thank you for that. You look at the Center City West, many of the old buildings, the investments that occur. Many mainstream investors would say, "Why would I want to go there, Councilmember?" But yet you have Persian investors coming to my district saying, "We see the beauty in the people, we see the beauty and the value of the immigrant experience, and we will invest in it." And you've brought rebirth to my district. So thank you for your spirit, your commitment, and all you've done for this city. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Mr. Reyes. Our next speaker is Ms. Gruh.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I too want to stand up and acknowledge Mr. Cardenas, as well as the mayor and all of the representatives here today. Today is a day of celebration, not only because of the Persian New Year, but a celebration of diversity in our city, a diversity across our city, but also we can see within our city family that is here and how we have strived under many, many mayors. And my pleasure when I worked for Tom Bradley about the importance of diversifying our city family. And we see today a celebration not only in our staff, but in our commissioners. And Andrew, great to see you and glad you are doing well. We all sent our prayers in your recent accident, so we're glad that you are back and looking well today. But I just wanted to stand and say that the culture, the diversity, the participation, I think, as Mr. Reyes mentioned, about investing in our communities, not only financially with your businesses, but also with your community participation is so critical. And so I'm pleased to stand up today and also celebrate with you this wonderful occasion and look forward to it every year. And thank you, Tony, for this that you have put on for the last three years and the celebration that we will see here in the city. that we will see here in the city of Los Angeles. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. Our next speaker is Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. The year 1385, it is again a starting over and a rebirth. And what you've done for us is help us all rebirth and all start all over again. We're all part of the human condition. And when you came here, basically in great numbers after the Shah was deposed, you immediately involved yourself in making Los Angeles a better place. You've invested in the community. You've become a significant pillar in the community, and we're all grateful for the Persian influence within our great metropolitan area here in Los Angeles. But most importantly, as the world again is dealing with questions of security and the Iranian situation, we know that your understanding of the brotherhood and sisterhood of humanity will help us in Los Angeles continue to be a partner with people across the ocean. Because you've demonstrated that all people are good people, and your soul and your spirit, which we renew today, is a blessing to all of us. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Our next speaker is Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just wanted to rise to say Happy Persian New Year. And for me, I have lived my life, hopefully, by a lesson that I first learned in my favorite book of the Old Testament with the name of Esther, who of course was the queen of Persia. And it is a very important lesson that little girls should grow up, and as well as all of us should learn. And there's a...it was all about whether or not Esther, who had risen to this royal position as queen of Persia, would use that position for good, or would she remain silent and allow a tragedy to happen? And the verse says, "Who knows but that you have risen to this position for such a time as this?" And that is something that I like to live my life by. And I think as we begin the Persian New Year, everyone should take that lesson from a beautiful woman, the queen of Persia, to know that all of us, no matter where we are in life, whether we work for the city of Los Angeles, whether we're a commissioner, whether we're an elected official, whether we're a mother, whether we have friends that we have an influence over, all of us are in a position that we can either use for good or not. And I have tried to live my life by that great quote in the Book of Esther. And she was a great woman, and if you know the story, she did use her position as queen for good. And so Happy Persian New Year. Hopefully, that's a lesson that we can all remember every day of our lives.
Thank you, Ms. Han. And let me also just add my good wishes. I grew up in Tehran West, also known as Encino. And so I've been very close to the Persian community for my entire life, and my family very close. And not only, I think it was put so beautifully by our Assistant General Manager for the Convention Center, when you said that it is about the folks that came before and the tradition that the Persian community carries on, and represent the best of two worlds, the best of the American spirit and the best of the Persian spirit as well, the cradle of civilization. And we all owe a debt to that history and that heritage. And it is wonderful to be able to capture a piece of that here and to integrate that into the rich fabric of this society. So congratulations on this new year for Noor Uz. We all kind of commit to ourselves, not just as a community and as a city, but as individuals. It is a time for renewal and reflection. So I certainly will take that to heart personally, and I want to thank you for blessing us with your presence here today in the council chambers and also in this city. And with that, I'll return it back to Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I'll make my closing brief. I think the fact that we lost two of our young ones to a potty break means that we've been speaking quite some time today on this one. But I just want to make a brief prediction about these beautiful young ladies who stood here before us in their beautiful outfits and their traditional outfits, that I predicted in them, we will probably see a doctor, an engineer, and a developer on each one of them. And I say that with much love and respect and compliment. Notice I didn't say lawyer. You never have to hire a lawyer. But with that, I'd like to give this resolution on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, signed by all of us elected officials. And I'm very, very proud to say that I have been blessed to call many, many of you my friend. Congratulations. Thank you for all your contributions, and God bless you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas and all of our friends in the Persian community. We thank you very much on this auspicious day. And with that, we'll return to our regular agenda, and we have...
President Garcetti?
Yes, I'm sorry.
The food will be served for everybody, Persian, Irish, or Encino at the Rontana for everybody. Also, for council members, there's wonderful food in the back room. Please help yourself, and your staff, please join us for food.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that, Mr. Edelman. If we can take up our first item, which is a commissioner, who's been very patient here all morning long, a nomination for a commissioner, that's item number one. Madam Clerk?
And that's item number one, and it's confirmation of Mr. Bruce Iwasaki to the Board of Taxi Cab Commissioners and a Transportation Committee reports recommends approval.
Welcome, Mr. Iwasaki. And I would just ask folks, as much as possible, please to move your conversations outside if we can. Thank you so much, so we can continue the business of the council. And I'd like to recognize first Ms. Gruel, our Chair of the Transportation Committee, and welcome you, Mr. Iwasaki, for putting yourself forward for public service. And Ms. Gruel will be our first speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And we had a chance for him to come before our Transportation Committee. Many of us know Mr. Iwasaki from his other life, which we are pleased that you, from Legal Aid, that you are going to also give some of your time here to our Taxi Cab Commission. You'll hear, maybe if you're still around, that...and Ms. Han calling an item special today that deals with taxi cab drivers at the L.A. World airports. I think I spoke to you about a survey that is going...that is being done, that actually they were able to do of taxi cab drivers that service the airports at that location. Gary Blazey from UCLA, it has, I know, completed at least the initial interviews, and we're looking forward...and Ms. Han and I are talking about having a meeting to see some of that result. But I just think I wanted to stand up, see if you had anything you wanted to add, but that our pleasure and your willingness to serve on this commission, it has reached a different level in this city, the kinds of questions and issues that heretofore have not been discussed, about our service delivery of taxi cabs, as well as the taxi cab drivers themselves, and how they are able to operate and have, you know, a better living here in Los Angeles. So I will just leave it open to you to have any comments you'd like to say.
I think I should refrain from comments. I'm happy to answer questions, but I think anything I say would keep the council from participating in the reception outside.
Well, we look forward to...
That's kind of you. We also have other important business right here, so we're looking forward to doing those things too.
I would ask for adoption of this appointment today.
Great. Thank you very much. Ms. Han, to be followed by Mr. Zain.
Thank you. I'm happy to agree to your service on this commission. I would ask that if you could stay here while we take up items 14 and 15, which directly speaks to how we operate the taxi cabs at LAX. And I believe you...I believe we're going to open public comment for some of the people who have come down here, some of the taxi drivers themselves, to publicly address us on some of the issues that they're concerned about. And I think it would be, if you could, stay around, I think that would be important. And I will just say that, to me, taxi cabs and taxi cab drivers are really the first...they are in the first line of the first impression that many people who come to LAX have with our city. And we want to make sure...I know I want to make sure that taxi cab drivers are treated with dignity, are treated fairly, are, you know, as happy as they can be in what I think is a very, very tough profession. And it's probably a thankless profession, but I know that it does give...these are the faces that are the first impression that many tourists have when they come to Los Angeles. So it's issues that I'm going to be very interested in and very involved in, and I would love it if you stayed while we took up those items. But other than that, I'm happy to approve your nomination. I want to thank you for your service on this commission.
Thank you, Ms. Han.
Thank you. Mr. Zain is our next speaker, and then Mr. Wesson.
Thank you. I just want to bring to your attention not the legitimate cab industry, but the banded cab industry. And there is a very aggressive banded cab operation throughout the city of Los Angeles. I have worked with the taxi investigators and gone out and made arrests while they have stopped these individuals. They need more resources to do that, because what this does, the banded cabs will take over a community, and the legitimate cabs are driven out of the community. So legitimate cabs that have insurance, and there's an article in today's paper about insurance for a cab industry, all of the issues that they comply with, the legitimate cab industry, it's all diverted by the banded cabs. And it's not just one or two banded cabs. They are alive and well throughout the city of Los Angeles. We've tried to work with their investigators with the department. That matter has still not been resolved, and they prey on the public, because the public does not know the difference between a legitimate cab and a banded cab. So on that commission, please, whatever you can do for the safeguard of the community of Los Angeles and those that utilize taxi cabs. We need to address that in a more aggressive fashion. Other cities have eradicated them, but they're doing tremendous business in the city of Los Angeles, which is jeopardizing the legitimate cab industry. I bring that to your attention as a commissioner.
I appreciate that, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Wesson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President and members. I rise today because Bruce is a constituent in my district, and I truly believe in kissing up. Do you want some water or anything, Bruce? Can I get you a sandwich? No. Bruce, you know, he's not new to public service. I mean, this is just another phase in his life. For years, he has given pro bono legal service to individuals who could not afford it. Because of him, their lives are better. I have no doubt that when we confirm your appointment, that you're going to represent not only the district we live in well, but the city of Los Angeles. I just commend you for somehow adjusting your calendar so that you could volunteer and help us even more. Thanks, Bruce, and I'm proud to have you in my district.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Let's prepare the roll and the nomination, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Congratulations, Commissioner. Thank you again.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Let's send that fourth whip to the mayor. And thank you for your patience this morning. We appreciate that very much. Next order of business.
Do you wish to take a public comment at this time, or do you wish to go through the rest of the agenda, Mr. President?
Excuse me? Could you repeat that one more time?
Do you wish to take a public comment on non-agenda items or go through the rest of the agenda?
Let's go to public comment next. Okay? I'd like to call forward for public comment. Cards that we have here, starting with, excuse me, Wade Hunter. And then Karen Bonadio, or Bonadio, and then Ralph Croy. Those will be our first three speakers. And thank you as well for your patience this morning. We've got lots of cards, so if I'm not reading, we've got about 63 cards. We'll get to everybody's cards.
Thank you. My name is Wade Hunter. I'm the president of the North Valley Coalition. I'd just like to say that the sun doesn't shine quite as brightly on the neighbors of Sunshine Canyon as it does for the rest of Los Angeles. And in case you may have forgotten a few of the reasons why we tune up here so often, I thought I'd let you know what's happening in our neighborhood as we speak. Three teachers at Van Gogh Elementary School have recently been diagnosed with cancer. One is now terminal with two weeks to live, the other with liver cancer, and a third with breast cancer. Of course, the teachers are freaking out, with so many of them sick in such a short period of time. Should they worry? Directly between them and Sunshine Canyon is Mary Edwards' house, where five of the adjoining properties, including hers, have had cancer. For those of you who know Mary, I learned last night that she has bone cancer. Should Mary worry? Between Mary and Sunshine is Whistler Avenue, and slightly to the west on such streets as Meadowlock and Tennyson, there exists a string of cancers. She can, of course, take heart in the county department's health study that assured her that the cancers in her area were statistically insignificant because the DOHS sample size was too small, but failed to mention that it was twice the rate of the cohort group, and dismissed the high rate of asthma as a result of reporting by hysterical women. Did I mention that the last three presidents of the North Valley Coalition have died of cancer? Should I worry? To continue, the school is now reporting increased episodes of smells of garbage to the AGUMD, not to be confused with sewer smells, which are also, again, being reported between them and Sunshine. These smells coincide when BFI discharges huge volumes of treated water from the Leaking County landfill liner into the city's sewer system under our homes. Should the LAUSD worry? So if you ever come to our fair neighborhood, look at the hills above us and notice the ever-increasing amounts of trash working its way into the vegetation, and the flocks of what look like white birds that are really plastic shopping bags flying over us on the way to Porter Ranch.
I can ask you to...
I'm almost done. And if you leave us via the I-5 freeway on your way back to Los Angeles, wave goodbye to the Caltrans property and the streets to the southeast downwind of Sunshine, littered with windblown trash. And try to think that this stuff...
Thank you.
...along with dust and pathogens that is getting into the water that you drink.
Thank you.
I'd like to...
Next...
Let me...I have one.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hunter.
Almost done.
We have to do two minutes to be fair to everybody. My apologies. Okay. Mr. Croy, if you want to yield your time?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. Go ahead. This is Mr. Croy's time.
Thank you. And to make sure that you avoid the constant stream of trash transfer trucks that continually crosses over the center line into the oncoming traffic at Sepulveda and Roxford, we worry. We wouldn't want you to get hurt. And while I applaud your comments and commend you for taking a first step today, our problems will not go away until urban landfills are a thing of the past. Thank you, and I'll yield the balance of the time to Mr. Croy.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Croy, we still have a minute and a half. Thank you. We pause the timer and put on a minute and a half if we can. Thank you, and appreciate your understanding of that. Mr. Croy, we're going to have the clock at two minutes, but if you'll...we're going to cut you off at 30 seconds, if that's all right. So you have a minute and a half. Welcome.
Thank you. The Metropolitan Water District provides water to over 19 million customers, including you. That means you and your constituents drink it, wash your food in it, and wash and bathe in it. Are you listening, Mr. Reyes? The Metropolitan Water District site is at the north end of the San Fernando Valley. Seagulls and migratory birds that feed at the dump visit the open reservoir water that has been filtered and treated and deposit their dump waste. The trash from the nearby dump blows onto the security fences, giving the fence an immediate purpose: collecting trash blowing from the dump. The trash on the fences is mostly plastic bags. Bags that held your garbage and used diapers are on the security fence. That's good. And in the reservoir, that's bad. The water goes to the water system without additional filtering. You drink it, wash your food in it, and bathe in it. What happens when the birds have Asian flu?
I can ask you to conclude, Mr. Croy. Thank you very much, Mr. Croy. Appreciate it. Karen Bonadio? Excuse me if I...Bonadio. Excuse me, Karen. Karen Bonadio.
I feel like I'm talking to a ghost ship here. Anyway, my name is Karen Bonadio, and I'm a California state licensed contractor here in Los Angeles. And I'm here to talk about the newly proposed $40 million budget for an inadequate Los Angeles Zoo elephant exhibit. Folks, $40 million, it's a lot of money. Now, that does not include an $11 million Mycla debt that has to be paid back. Now, if you look at the history of the Los Angeles Zoo and their construction and renovation project, and I'm talking about the Sea Lion Cliff and the entrance, that ran over budget 40%. Now, that's a lot of money when you're starting at 19.3 million, going to 27 million final cost. If we do the math correctly, let's take our new $40 million proposed budget, let's times that by 40% overage, that gives us another $16 million. Ladies and gentlemen, we're at almost... Ladies and gentlemen, we're at almost $60 million for an inadequate enclosure, 3.5 acres, which frankly, the zoo doesn't tell you, they're not really going to get the 3.5 acres. They don't have 3.5 acres. They never did. So what is that going to mean? That's going to mean having to displace other animals. That's going to cost more money. You know, it's just becoming, they're just grasping at straws here. They don't know what to do. We ought to follow what the mayor says. He stated repeatedly, we need to move the elephants out. They're too big to be in a zoo. They need to have space. The LA Zoo does not have space for these poor elephants. I believe he has integrity. I want to follow his lead. I'm asking all the council people to do the same. Follow what Mayor Vierigosa has stated. This price is wrong. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Sheri Mann is our next speaker, to be followed by Daniel French. Sheri Mann? Sheri? Other. Welcome.
Hi, Sheri Mann. Thank you for the three or four of you that have remained. I just wanted to talk about the large, which we now have the largest dump in the world over the only water supply LA owns for itself. 15 percent, we buy the rest. And when the birds come, eat off the dump, and take their, wash their feet, and wash their food in the only, well, one of, the only left open cleaned reservoirs, and I hope the bird flu doesn't affect us in any way. I hope you can put antibiotics in this big, open reservoir. But I, I'm really, actually, I'm happy that perhaps BFI will soon have to find another way to do business. I think they ought to put a honeymoon hotel on the top of the world, right where BFI is. It would be, that's a better way to spend their money. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Daniel French? Is Daniel French here? Welcome, Mr. French.
Hello, good morning. My name is Daniel French. I'm a previous student of Azusa Pacific University, and I have over here over 800 letters from the Azusa Pacific University community, students, professors, and faculty members who are in support of the South Central farmers, and calling for a halt. Thank you. We're calling for a halt to the eviction notice, an investigation into how the land, an official investigation into how the land was sold through Rocky Delgado and others, and as well, meanwhile, these negotiations are going on, a halt to the eviction process. I have a few questions here that I wanted to ask. Specifically, was there an open town hall meeting asking the community's opinion about the possible sale of this farm? Was the community at large, community leaders, teachers, mothers, churches, the LA Regional Food Bank, were they notified of your plans, and when I say, I'm saying the community, the city council, of your plans to make a decision that was supposed to represent their priorities? And did that include the farmers who were on that land? Is it true that the Judge D.W. Crispo ruled three times against the sale of the land to Ralph Horowitz to buy the 14-acre plant? And is it also true that after, after those rulings by Judge Crispo, that the land was still sold to the developer? So those are my questions, and I would appreciate if they could be answered. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for the record, we often say that we can't respond directly, and it's not because we're not interested in responding, but under California state law, because it's not agendized as an item right now, we can't respond because other folks who'd want to be here for the responses weren't notified. So that's the only reason why, under California state law, we can't directly respond. But we, I'm sure privately, and deputies will be willing to answer those questions. So thank you very much.
Okay. If I could just finish my comment, then just respond quickly. Thank you for sharing that with me.
Sure.
And then I would just like to note, I guess, for the community here, that the farmers were not notified, as far as I know, that the farmers were not notified of the sale of the land as they were farming it. So I would, I would love that we could manifest these rules throughout the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And our next speaker is Jacob Sisson. Excuse me if I mispronounced that. Welcome.
Hi, I'm a student of Azusa Pacific University currently. I would also like to address the issue of South Central Farm and decision to transfer the land to the private ownership of the developer, Ralph Horowitz, and the LeBach Horowitz Investment Company, which has been, this land which had been used by numerous members of the local community as a community space for over 14 years. I believe that the decision to grant the members of the community the opportunity to use the land for the benefit of its people in 1992 was a positive and encouraging one. I see the way in which the people in this community rallied around the asset to perform, transform the 14 acres into a shared community garden, and which supplements the diet of over 350 families, as a commendable and inspirational thing that they've done. I see the recent developments, beginning with the sale of this land to Mr. Horowitz, and the means of that sale, and the threat of imminent destruction of the farm, and its replacement by a, by a retail warehouse, as a devastating blow to the true development of this community. This farm ought to be, ought to serve as a model for how communities may be developed towards a more sustainable environment of social, environmental, and physical well-being. As a university student member of a separate community within this region and county, I want to affirm the farmers and our mutual interest in decisions made that affect us environmentally, socially, and economically. I've become aware of the, that the issue of the use and ownership of this land is occurring within the context of a plan to develop the Alameda Corridor to facilitate trade and the movement of retail goods from the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach. While further integration into the system of global trade may be seen as beneficial from an economic standpoint purely, the conversion of the farm into a warehouse is clearly not in the interests and health of the members of this local community. I wish therefore to express my concern about the priorities that the city and its administration are communicating by the response, or lack of response, to the concerns of South Central farmers and those who support them.
Thank you. If I can ask you to conclude. Thank you. I just want to remind speakers as well, I know we have a number of other speakers that are here, even though it's under general public comment, it is on the farm at 41st and Alameda, which is agendized actually as an item. I've been reminded by the city attorney that it would be probably more proper to have folks speak during that actual agenda item. So with your permission, I will make sure that we get to those cards, but we will move them to that item with everybody's assent there. Otherwise, we, I believe, are out of order to have something that is agendized as a calendar item to be taken up in public comment. So is there anybody else in public comment who wants to speak on something that is not agendized today? Mr. Carvajal, I have your card. Mr. Roberto Carvajal.
Thank you, sir. I'm here to speak today on the Skid Row Housing Trust. I don't know if you're familiar with it. They run the SROs downtown hotels that are for people with mental disabilities. I'm in one of these SROs, the Simone Hotel. We have a caseworker that is supposed to be there taking care of us, making sure that everything runs smoothly and that we don't become homeless. I've been chronically homeless, and this facility is for that very purpose. A lot of people have been, that I've noticed have been evicted, or are being evicted, being summoned, not given their due date in court. Sorry, let me backtrack. Let me just give you a specific. There's a gentleman, Steve, who was there for quite a long time. At one point, the sheriff showed up to his house and asked him to leave. He hadn't been summoned. He hadn't been given any kind of notice. His caseworker didn't even give him the chance to articulate his problem. He tried to pay his rent, and it was not allowed. Same thing has happened to me, and I will soon be homeless. I sent you, and every single one of the members, I sent you a package. I've contacted, I've contacted Jan Perry's office, who has gone out of her way to, I believe she calls it a 10-year program, got out of her way to make sure that the homeless leave downtown Los Angeles. This 10-year program includes getting people out of these downtown hotels, these SROs run by the Skid Row Housing Trust, by not giving them their summons in time. When I was given my summons, I was told, when I was summoned, I was given a summons and told, "Don't worry about it. As long as you pay the rent, it'll be all right." I did not know at that point that I had a five-day window of opportunity to answer the summons, and as such, now I'm being evicted, and so are a lot of people. I talked to Doctors Perez at the downtown mental health just now and told them, "There should be a better way of summoning these people. There should be somebody there to explain it completely, and the people, it should be investigated." I would wish a task force to investigate the people that are running these caseworkers, these places, and also to unite not only the Skid Row Housing Trust, but also all the other ones, because there's, like, the loss and stuff, they don't want to run it. But there's grievances that are being addressed that aren't getting to the people proper authorities. I have a HUD worker, her name is Ms. Rubio, Kelly Rubio. She's with HUD, and she, if anybody wants to speak to her, can find me through her. My phone number is 213-622-0858. And I've contacted everybody. Like I say, there's a lot of people getting homeless because they're not, summons right. These people are NSA, need special attention, and their caseworker is completely not only ignoring them, but I have tape-recorded evidence of crimes that have been committed there, drug dealing, with staff members' permission. I don't know if they get kickbacks or not, but there's a lot of that going on on San Julian and, and Los Angeles. And at this point, you can't even sit down on the street down there because you get arrested.
Thank you. Appreciate the comments. Ms. Sylvia Hawkins? Would you like to come forward? Ms. Sylvia Hawkins, I know you filled out on the number two for the special meeting. Did you want to comment on that one now?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ms. Sylvia Hawkins. On number two, I believe I, we must say, no, we are asking all vendors to give no food, our Red Bull energy drink to any church because all churches are mixing it with communion and the medication that is causing people brain damage, speech problem, and slowness of walking and thinking. This is put on the public people because their bishops is not with the United States of America government and the war that is going on now, but other local governments. They are doing the ex-president Nixon or ex-president Roosevelt style of thinking. There are surgeries, sick people of illness in the pulpit. So as they look at the congregation people and see joy, health, and prosperity, they are angry that they don't have what the public people have, which is no more sickness or disease with their own private part and great faith. Again, the Red Bull is basically mixed in the communion that is causing side effects of, of like respadol, that is causing them to move too quickly, and too quickly in thought and beat of mainly maybe the 30-second note of quick and speed. So we're asking everyone to be pleased, cautious, at the time of this war that is not complete, at the time of Iraq, our soldiers coming back, as people dealing with side effects of medication.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Hawkins. That closes our general public comment. I know there's a lot of folks who have been waiting. We have two items in which there's a lot of cards, item 16 and 64. Those are, item 16 is an item for action today. We also have a couple other items that have been called special. So we would have next 14 and 15, Mr. Zein called. I believe both of those special, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President, and there is a substitute motion that has been introduced and distributed to the council members on item number 15.
Item 15. Mr. Zein, is there, is it very long on either one of these? We do have a number of public cards on both 16 and 64, and folks have been waiting. What's your preference? We could quickly dispose of 14 and 15 if you want, to do it that way?
Well, I want to make sure that the commander is able to give a presentation on the very important issue, on the particular items. And I understand Motorola is here also?
That's absolutely correct. And I can be, I can be very brief.
I mean, we could probably do it in five or 10 minutes at the most.
Okay. I've had requests to take other ones out of order, even with the five or 10 minutes, so we would have to.
Well, let's do 10 minutes. If we go over, then we'll cut it. I think we can do it within 10 minutes.
Okay. Ms. Hahn and Ms. Perry?
Because I think the commander has to get back to policing, and we've got some representatives from the police department need to get back to policing. I mean, that whole wall's lined up with members of the LAPD who need to get back to work. They've been here since like 9 o'clock this morning, and they haven't had lunch, and we've got a festival taking place. And the Irish are out there drinking, and the Persians are out there eating, and here we are delaying. So why don't we get the show on the road?
Okay, Mr. Zein, we have, and I know we have, we have about 40 folks from taxi companies, taxi drivers that have taken time off of their work to be here as well right now.
There we go.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we do this, colleagues? I'm sorry, is this just for item number 14, Mr. Zein?
We can combine them. We can put them together.
Okay, let's take these both up right now, and if we can just try to do it in about five minutes, that would be great.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
We've got Commander Beck here, who can give us a brief explanation. I think all the members have a pass out on this Jordan Downs project, and the fact that Motorola has given over $1 million on this particular project. And I also have an amendment on a substitute motion on 15 that we accept the grant, just for the technical record, accept the grant of $221,618. So the word has to be "accept." Madam Clerk, if you got that?
We'll make sure we have that changed. Thank you, Mr. Zein.
On the substitute motion to "accept." Okay, thank you. Commander Beck, if you can explain on those two items, please.
Certainly, Councilmember. What you have before you is an acceptance of a generous donation from Motorola and a grant from the Department of Justice relative to a, an initiative that we're going to implement in Jordan Downs, utilizing a number of technologies that Councilmember Garcetti is very familiar with, as is Councilmember Reyes. They will include closed-circuit television, a wireless mesh network that will, that will encase the area surrounding Jordan Downs and provide not only access by public safety to the cameras wirelessly in the police vehicles and at the station and at Communications Division, but also allow the residents access to the internet. We're very excited about this collaboration. We're going to include license plate recognition systems. We're going to include facial recognition systems, and, and we think that it will greatly enhance the public safety in Jordan Downs, an area that sorely needs it.
That was very brief. I want to, uh.
Well, let me, let me, please, let me add that I would like to thank Motorola. Hugh O'Donnell's here from Motorola, Department of Justice, U.S. Attorney George Cardona's here from Department of Justice.
If we can bring them up to the table.
Without them, this would not be possible.
If we can bring those folks up also, Motorola, Department of Justice. I know there's a partnership that's taking place on this particular program, and this is an area that's had a lot of crime problems, a lot of good people down there, been victimized over the years, but this state-of-the-art technology will give the law enforcement agency, the LAPD, all of the latest technical ability to monitor through the video, not just at the police station, but in the cars. We have a couple more minutes if we can hear from DOJ and Motorola.
And I'll, I'll let Hugh O'Donnell start, and he'll be brief. Right here.
Yes, sir. Motorola is very proud and pleased to be part of this important effort. We're bringing some of our newest and most cutting-edge technology to the service of the city of Los Angeles and the Los Angeles Police Department. And, you know, the main motivation, I think I can state for the record that Motorola is involved in this is that we believe it's the right thing to do for, for the city of Los Angeles, for our valued partner, Los Angeles Police Department, and also for the people of the community of Jordan Downs.
The grant, the grant funds that started the project are actually provided by both the Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Department of Justice jointly. We've worked with the LAPD and with Motorola. Our hope is that this new technology will assist in an area where, in our experience, there have been significant gang problems and significant problems with violent crime. The hope is that that will be reduced significantly through the use of this new technology. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Janice, I think it would be wonderful for the community to reduce the crime problems. And we had a full view yesterday in public safety where there was a visual display showing how all the components work together. And I think that, Commander, you're the one that brought video to MacArthur Park and reduced crime tremendously in that area. So congratulations. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn is next, and Mr. Parks.
Thank you. And Dennis, you're right. I mean, I think ultimately, this is going to be a positive program, and we want to thank Motorola for awarding this $1.2 million in camera equipment. I will, though, just take this opportunity to offer a bit of my concern, a bit of my frustration, working with LAPD, working with the U.S. Attorney's Office. The communication with my offices have been poor. In my opinion, the communication with this community has been poor. This is a community that certainly is racked by violent crime and wants to end it. This is a community that is ravaged by, by gang terrorism. But this is also a community that many times feels like we come in with solutions without talking to people in the community and without getting their input and their advice on how to move forward. So while this may be a great idea, I'm one of those that I do like technology, but I never think cameras substitute for police officers or substitute for real-life people. And part of the issue, as you know, that I have is we're calling this sort of a safe passage by putting cameras along the way between Jordan High School and Jordan Downs. That's important. But there already is a program placed that has human beings that are really linking on every day after school. I've been out there myself, every day after school, trying to keep these kids safe that are walking home and are being harassed by gang members that go along the way to and from school. Some of our kids aren't going to school because they are afraid to walk to school and to walk home. That is a tragedy that shouldn't be happening anywhere in America. So hopefully, these cameras will help. But I want to make a friendly amendment to this, that no camera is installed until you give a presentation at my weekly Watts Community Gang Force Task Force. I've asked for that, and it hasn't been done yet. And I do, I think the community wants to participate. They want a partner, but they want to have the dignity that you've made that presentation to them, and they want to help actually possibly giving you the best locations to install those cameras. And I know we're taking fifteen up at the same time. I don't want to receive and file that. I do know, though, that one of the things we have to do is accept another $200,000 to provide technical support to these cameras, and I'm willing to do that. But I want a complete report back to my committee. Education Neighborhoods and Public Safety wants to hear it as well. I want a full breakdown of where these DOJ funds for the community are going. I want a full breakdown of the service providers that you're looking at, working with. Again, I was told that these DOJ funds had already been assigned to particular community groups to do tutoring, to do job training, to do mentoring, after-school programs, with no communication with my office, no ability from me or my community to weigh in on these service providers who, you know, will be doing these services. So I think this was handled very poorly, very poorly. You've spent the last hour huddling back here with me, trying to explain to me where these funds are going, why item fifteen was a report, was a receive and file, and yet there was funds in there that we had to accept. So you handled this very poorly. I'm not against the program, and I don't mean for Motorola to think that we're ungrateful. We're grateful. We need partners. This hopefully is a positive sign for the community of Watts. Hopefully, it will help to reduce violence. But you've got to work with me better, and you've got to work with the community better before we institute a program like this.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Parks, followed by Ms. Zein.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to echo what Ms. Hahn said, and what's interesting is, and Charlie, you remember Jerry Connor was one of the first commanding officers in the LAPD that talked about cameras, and twenty years ago, people thought he was, you know, way off the ledge because of that technology, and people viewed it differently today. But the issues that I'm concerned about, and I think it is a step forward that we're looking at the housing developments for this type of technology, but without a financial impact statement, I see that the CLA, CLA, and CAO has not looked at this. I'm just wondering, from your understanding of the grants, is there a city general fund impact? And also, as this program goes forward, are there revenue streams to repair and upkeep of the equipment, or how does that work?
Councilman, there is, CAO has been consulted on this. There is no fiscal impact to the city. There is some additional DOJ grant money that is controlled by DOJ that will be able to support the system. We believe we'll be able to go forward with this system for many years with the funding that we have.
Okay. So our, the commitment from the grant, how long is that grant?
Perhaps George can speak to that better.
The grant, the grant is a fixed amount. It's a total of $600,000, some portion of which is being used right now to purchase the technology, another portion of which is set aside. It's for a two-year period.
Is that for the purchase? Because I'm, the purchase, I think, gets us to the point of the program gets unveiled, we have a ribbon-cutting, but the long-term benefit, and we've seen in the past, the maintenance and upkeep of the program is where the shortfall always comes up. And if it starts falling apart, then you end up with a third of the program, one half of the program, it just kind of dissipates. So I'm just wondering what the revenue stream on that?
And, Councilman, the upkeep of these cameras for the first two years of their life is certainly included in the funds that we have available. I anticipate that we won't have any difficulty with the upkeep of the system. However, the issue with these forms of technology is that it usually, it's not so much about the repair of these cameras, but the replacement.
Yeah.
And they're actually, we actually have other grants that we, that we're attempting to secure through UASI for replacement cameras and for a citywide network. We would like this just to be the start, the beachhead. So we believe that the upkeep of these cameras, in the short term, will be covered by the grant. In the long term, we won't be upkeeping these cameras, we'll be replacing them, and hopefully through other funding sources.
Are we on a timeline to get this implemented? Is there something that falls apart if we don't do something immediately?
Well, I have, Motorola's been most generous and most patient in this, and their, their crew is ready and willing and in place to start the implementation of the program, and I'd hate to hold them up. And they are doing the vast majority of this as a donation to the city.
Okay. Let me just ask you, the reason I ask you for, is there's a timing issue, because without the CLA, CAO looking at this, it's difficult, at least for me, to know, have we secured this? And once it's in place, like you said, if the cameras break our replacement, you'll be coming, if they don't replace them?
Sir, we will not be coming to the city to replace these cameras. There will be no fiscal impact to the city. These cameras will be serviced and installed by Motorola for the first short term of the program, the first year, the first two years. After that, we won't be replacing them with similar, we won't be fixing them. We'll be trying to look for other avenues to replace them. So this will, this program will not impact the city fiscally.
Okay.
And we've had discussions with the CAO, and there's no report attached, but they have reviewed what we have.
Okay. Let me just, Madam Chair, if we don't create a real dilemma, I'd like to, because we do not have a financial statement, if we could ask that we hold this for next week and for Wednesday, to give them, the CAO and CLA, to quickly look at this, because I'm concerned as to whether the maintenance long-term, and we've seen in the past some of these programs that we put in place and then we're unable to maintain them, and even though this is a grant, we generally have a financial impact statement by the CLA and CAO before we go forward. And it somewhat missed the budget and finance, too, so...
I'd look to both the Police Department and Mr. Zein and Ms. Hahn if there's any problems with the delay in us accepting that grant today.
Well, my concern is that there's...
And we'll go ahead and put this on Mr. Zein's time for a minute, so...
There's clearly a crime problem in that part of the city of Los Angeles. And we look at the murder rate and the gang violations in that community. Anything we do is going to benefit that. And I think that if it's a free, generous donation by Motorola and the federal government, that we shouldn't delay it. We should accept it and move forward with it. Every day we delay, we hear about another shooting that takes place in that community, another student who gets shot on his way to school. So I've heard from Councilmember Parks and Councilmember Hahn about the violence in that community. I don't see a purpose in delaying. If the equipment breaks down, deal with it at that time. If we don't have the funds in the police department budget, the mayor's now asked the police department to cut back on some of their budgeting. What I'm looking at is how do we do something in the crime prevention aspect? So I would say we should move forward with it. If we delay it till next week and we delay it down the road, we're taking free money from Motorola with their generosity and saying we've got more debate to do. I think we debated it enough to say, we need to do it. We did hear this in public safety. We were very positive received in public safety yesterday when it was heard. Also, as far as Ms. Hahn goes, if the police department is not communicating with the elected official in that district, then that's a very serious problem. And Commander Beck, are you in charge of that bureau now?
I absolutely am.
Okay. I don't know what the relationship is with the council office. I know in Valley Bureau, Chief Moore and I communicate, the captain. So maybe something has to be enhanced in the communication between the police department, especially in South Los Angeles, where we do have a lot of gang activity, a lot of violence. If there's a breakdown in that, that needs to be remedied with you and the administration of the police department. I know from the Valley, I have no complaints about the command staff or what we're getting done there. But I would say, don't delay this, move it forward. If we need to get an answer back, I don't have any problem with that, but I don't want to delay putting forward something that's going to help the safety of the community.
Well, you know, I will say...
Okay, so, why don't you push your button? Let me let Mr. Parks finish his comments. You had a few more seconds left.
Yeah, I have a couple comments. Number one, I wasn't able to be at public safety because we moved it to a special date, and I was at MTA. We would have vetted this had it gone through the budget and finance process, which it didn't get there, which normally it does. So that, these questions would have been asked had it gone through the normal process. I think my concern is, we've seen as we've captured grants at times and we go forward with them, we often regret some time because we find it's more expensive to have the grant than to not have it. And so we're just looking at it, say, if the CLA and CAO have not looked at it, and we don't have the assurances that, and the funding, that it's able to maintain, a year from now, Ms. Hahn will say, I have a great program, but it's only working halfway because nobody can fix the cameras. We've seen that happen over and over and over again. And so if we can wait to Wednesday and give the CLA, CAO a chance to give us some idea of some of these issues that impact us in the budget, then I think three days is not going to cause the program to go sideways. And so, again, we're, I'm concerned that we bypassed budget and finance and haven't had no chance to be at public safety. All these questions should have been asked during that process.
That will be your request. I'll let Ms. Hahn speak, and then we'll take that item first.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. He's asking for it to be continued. Yes, I acknowledge you. Would you like to make a few comments before we go down this?
Well, yeah, I was going to say, I mean, I'm actually in favor of that, especially since my friendly amendment was, no cameras can be installed until the meeting is, the community gang task force meeting has been presented to. So, you know, if you could come on Monday to that group, then I think that makes perfect sense to delay it till Wednesday. Look, we didn't get in the position in Watts overnight. In fact, I would dare say it's been a forty-year problem. We're not going to solve it overnight. This could be one piece of the puzzle to solve the violence in Watts. I don't think it is the answer. I don't think it is the panacea for everything, but it certainly is one of the things that I think will be helpful in my community. But I think delaying it till Wednesday, when we can really thoroughly get some of these questions answered, is going to be more positive. And the more that the community can buy into it, the more that I can buy into it, then I think ultimately it'll be a much more successful program. So I'm, I would support Councilman Parks.
Mr. Zein, our last speaker.
Just another response. The delay until Wednesday, what if we delayed it till Tuesday? And another question, a technical matter, would it go if it's a grant to budget and finance? Do budget and finance handle grants if there's no impact in the city of Los Angeles?
Generally, they do come to budget and finance if it has an impact. Without a financial statement, we don't know what the impact is.
But if it's a grant, and there's a generosity from Motorola, 1.4 million in a grant from the federal government, why would it have to go through a review if it's money that we don't have to put anything up against?
Because we've not analyzed it to determine that.
Okay, before you go back and forth, Ms. Zein, we'll work with the president's office as well and the city clerk to identify those items in which they, whether they go to an additional committee other than if it is a grant and what the other impacts are.
Again, this was heard in public safety, excuse me, Madam President. It was heard in public safety. There was a discussion, there was approval, and our concern, and I'll go back again and again, for the members of the LAPD, it's another tool for them to help the community. And if communication has to be enhanced between Ms. Hahn's office and the police department, that I think is a whole separate track that has to be followed. But I would say, we are so concerned about crime in South Los Angeles, every single day is another potential victim. That's why I am so adamant about making sure we have the resources. And maybe we're not going to correct it overnight, but now we delay it, and just like the trash deal, Sunshine, we've delayed that since June. We finally resolved it today and the end of March. Well, I don't know how we're going to get a better proposal when it's free money.
I thought Mr. Zein was our last speaker. Mr. Parks.
No, I would just like to comment. First of all, this came through the public safety. Only two members were there. Also, having been around South Los Angeles a number of years and knowing what the crime issue is, what is worse than the crime issue are unkept promises? And so if we show up today and say, here's your cameras, and a year later they don't work, these same people that are applauding today may not be as happy as they are today. And all I'm saying is by Wednesday, and Ms. Hahn makes a very good point in the fact that her community hasn't even endorsed the program. And so until they meet and get a feel of the program by Monday, why would we be installing equipment that they haven't endorsed in the first place? And then not knowing what the city's impact and what the financial impact, why would we buy into a program that may cost us more money than we assume? And we see that all the time, whether we're talking about historic buildings or new equipment or grants. We have these hidden costs that eventually we end up eating those costs and creating an impact on the general fund. So by Wednesday, I don't think we caused the program to go sideways. And Ms. Hahn may come back Wednesday and say the community doesn't endorse it, which also puts it in some jeopardy. So I think that's what's important.
Okay, thank you. Last speaker then. So the item before us now is Mr. Parks has made a motion that we continue this until Wednesday, I think seconded probably by Ms. Hahn.
Yeah, and I believe in the interim to ask the CAO and the CLA to look at the fiscal impact.
Correct. So, Madam Clerk, let us know then that is the item, the amending item, the continuance with that?
Right. That would be both fourteen and fifteen, and then the substitute motion, which hasn't been adopted yet, that would also be on the agenda. Council should probably vote on your amendments so they could be implemented.
All right, so we'll vote first on Ms. Hahn's amendment. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Those have been approved. Next item?
Then that would be the, then the motion to continue the entire matter to Wednesday.
Madam Clerk, open the roll on continuance, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes, one no.
That item will be continued till Wednesday. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item, Madam President.
Excuse me, we're going to go to item number sixty-four and take public comment, even though we will be hearing that in public session, excuse me, in executive session. So I'd like to, how many minutes are we putting on the, one minute per individual that, okay? Or less if possible. Okay. Bella De Soto, I'm going to call you if you could please line up to the front, and I'll call your names, ma'am. Are you Bella? Okay. Bella De Soto, Mario Blanco, Mia Barber, Noreen McLendon. Those will be our first four. Please start. Go ahead.
One minute is not sufficient. I think this is an abomination. I thought I was going to speak on three minutes, like, for three minutes.
No, normally there is a one or two-minute period of time.
I submitted two cards.
Does it matter how many cards you submit? It's a...
For different issues, and I was not called on. The city budget is 12 billion. The redevelopment agency, California Redevelopment Agency, is displacing many people throughout the city between the LAUSD, between the agency, the redevelopment agency, and the eminent domain. The gentrification has reached very high proportions, especially in the poor communities, and this has got to be looked at. And there's a lot of money being funded, misused, or misappropriated by the California Redevelopment Agency and many developments in the South Central area, which now it's called South LA. I am here in support for the taxi drivers, the truck drivers at the ports that continue to suffer.
Madam, we are, this, that's another item, so you can speak on that item. You've spoken on this one, so we'll go to the next. Thank you very much. Mr. Blanco.
My name is Mario Blanco. I'm the president of...
Hold on a moment, though. Please, we'll have a translator.
My name is Mario Blanco, and I am the president of... Presidente de la North Central American Youth Soccer League. In the... The North Central American Youth Soccer League. I'm the president of the North Central American Youth Soccer League. We have eighteen hundred children registered, and we have... Two hundred awaiting. The reason why I'm here is we are requesting places where our children can be, can play. Of course, sports is healthy for the well-being of our children. And to avoid for them to go to the streets. Given that we are living in a place with a lot of violence, that is the South Central Los Angeles area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mia Barber, followed by Noreen McLendon, followed by Mark Williams and Samuel Sanchez.
Hello, my name is Mia Barber, and I'm with the Association of African-American Professionals. And we have an elder care initiative here in California, and we are here to support the work of those who are working in South Central Los Angeles for park space. We believe that aging adults need a sanctuary and they need places to go for peace. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you for your brevity.
Good morning. My name is Noreen McLendon. I'm the Executive Director of Concerned Citizens of South Central Los Angeles. As many people are aware, the site of the South Central Garden was the birthplace of our organization. We are for open space, we're for gardens. Our organization was instrumental in securing that site to be used on a temporary basis for the garden. However, any plans to sell that land to someone else without input from the community as to what should happen on that land, it should not be turned over to an outside agency to decide what happens. As it relates to the gardeners, if I invite you to my home for a visit and you overstay your visit, it doesn't give you the rights to the title to my property. The community has far more needs than 14 acres of garden space. Currently, only about 300 families get the benefit of 14 acres of space.
That's not true.
And that only about 300 families get the benefit where and half of them don't live in our community. So we need it to be opened up so that more people from the community can benefit from that. And there is no requirement to advise people of the sale of private property. So there was no need to advise the gardeners. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, followed by Samuel Sanchez, followed by, it looks like Dale Elliman. Thank you.
My name is Mark Williams. I'm here on behalf of Los Angeles Soccer League. It would be a public policy catastrophe for squatters' rights to accrue to folks who have been given free use of land. We have to promote interim uses so that our kids have safer places than the streets to play. It can take years and years to develop a property and get a project built in our community. If squatters' rights accrue to folks who have been given temporary use, we will never ever be able to get anybody to give us use of places to play. When land is taken for a public purpose through eminent domain, if the public purpose doesn't go forward, the land needs to revert back to its original owner. How are we going to get people to invest and cast their lot in our community if land can be taken for a public purpose and then used in some other way? This will be a public policy disaster for us. In the in the garden, we have had town hall meetings where thousands of families have come out and let Councilwoman Perry know what our vision and what our needs are. The folks who have organized the gardeners know better than what they proposed to the mayor's office. You're not going to be judged simply by your good intentions. You have to do the right thing the right way. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams. Samuel Sanchez, followed by Dale Elliman, excuse me, followed by Daniel French.
Last time I was here, my name is Samuel Sanchez. Last time I was here, Greg Smith claimed that they were you guys were forced under a court order to sign over the farm. That was a lie. It was a lie. It was settled out of court, signed by everyone here, and orchestrated by Rocky Delgado Deal in 92. You guys know the history. You guys know you profited when you sold it to yourselves. I don't need to waste my minute that was given to me. You guys know that Rocky Delgado Deal has gotten campaign contributions, Eric Garcetti has gotten campaign contributions, Victor Gallego has gotten campaign contributions, all from the Horowitz Group. They've gotten campaign contributions from his investment partners.
You can hold this time.
The Shag Ham Securities, Jack Leibl, and Jack's brother, Evan Leibl.
Excuse me, sir. We'll hold your time. I promise we'll hold your time. You'll get it back. I want to clarify because I know that's been put up. I did receive a donation from Mr. Horowitz, and I returned it, and that's public record.
Excellent. Excellent.
Thank you. Jan Perry also has a conflict of interest, sending her people up here to tout a soccer field. There's a soccer field less than a mile away from the farm, and lots of kids play there. But you know what? This is a place where they can play freely and their families can grow food. She has a conflict of interest, and her community redevelopment agency that's gentrifying downtown LA does not need to move down to South Central because that's one of her plans. If you go on the CRA website, you'll see that the South Central Farm is right in the middle of where she plans to redevelop, and that's her her conflict. And there's no way that she could legally take this land, and it was taken illegally in that backroom deal.
Can I ask? Thank you very much. Daniel French, followed by Mr. Lu Han, sorry, I can't pronounce your first name, I apologize, and then Dorothy Lee, followed by Eric Carlini.
Hi, I would just like to start by saying I hope that everybody who came is able to speak today, especially the farmers. I basically just wanted to make a quick note. Please stop the eviction notice, please investigate into the sale of the land, and please have an open council meeting. This must be tiresome for people to continue to come and make allegations and about the secrecy of the deal. If there were an open public forum in which the public and the community and the media were addressed, and you got down to all the specifics of how it was sold, we wouldn't have to have these conversations, I feel like. So I'm calling the city council as well as the mayor's office, as well as Councilwoman Jan Perry, and thank you for being here, to come out into the open and address these concerns in a public community meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lu Han?
Thank you. My name is Sochi Lu Han, and I'm with the Chicana and Chicano Studies Alumni Association at California State University Dominguez Hills. I'm very saddened to hear some of the earlier public comments that were mentioned about the farm. There are children within that community that utilize the farm for the produce that's given there, first of all, by the farmers. Second of all, they also utilize that space as a safe space where they can come and actually play with other children. Maybe it's not necessarily soccer, but as was stated earlier, there's actually a soccer field within that range. First of all, I find it ridiculous, Ms. Perry, I'd like to know what exactly have you done to communicate with the farmers before the issue of the property became an issue? I'd like to know how many times have you actually gone to the farm? And you can give me your looks. You know, I'm a sign language student also. I've taken sign language interpretation, and one of the things that we do is look at people's gestures and their hand signals to see where they're coming from and to see what tonality that gives. So when you look at me that way, you're being very disrespectful. So please, show a little respect because I'm also being respectful to you and the rest of the city council. And I'm asking valid questions that should be taken seriously. Had they been taken seriously in the first place and had you spoken with other constituents of your district, maybe you would find that you would not be in this situation, nor the city council members be put in this situation.
May I ask if you could conclude, please? Thank you. Dorothy, followed by Eric Carlini.
Hello, my name is Dorothy Kuley, and I'm an undergrads geography student at UCLA. I just first wanted to thank you, council members, for your time and your efforts for a greener LA. And I also want to personally thank President Eric Garcetti for his mention of item 64 and the importance of quorum for the discussion of this item. All I really can do is talk about my personal dealings with the farm. I understand it's a complex issue, but I want to highlight the farm as an important educational tool for students. At UCLA, we are currently sowing the seeds for a student community garden to grow some of our own food and provide community. We look to the South Central Farm as an important, as not only an inspiration for our efforts, but hands-on education. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Carlini? Eric Carlini? Okay, we'll go to the next speaker, Jesus Panegoa, Maria Avena, Alisa Avena. Please, go ahead.
Yeah, my name's Eric. Yeah, I want to address the council. This issue with the South Central Farms is very important. We got an eviction notice, and we haven't really got settled what really is in store and what's the plan. They keep saying they're making decisions, but none of the decisions are being made. And we're everybody's, you know, and the whole community is really, really in uproar about what's going on. It's an urgent situation. I mean, we don't, we haven't gotten any, any, given any, any consideration, anything to say that that they're going to save the farm and they're going to save this community jewel. And I'm not hearing it from anybody. And we've been up here, we've been, we've been fighting for this for years, and we're just asking the city council for help. Jan Perry, I wonder what you're going to do about this situation? I mean, we have 15, 20,000, you know, people in our organization following us with this situation. I mean, there's a lot of community involvement, you know? We want to see what's going to happen with this situation.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speakers.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es María Iñíguez, y yo vengo representando al sur central, los sur central farmer.
Good afternoon, my name is María Iñíguez, and I'm representing the South Central Farmers.
Yo solamente quiero que nos sigamos quedando con el lugar porque tenemos nosotros muchas necesidades de espacio. Somos personas de bajos recursos que vemos en apartamentos que no hay lugar para que nos jueguen.
I would like for us to keep the place. For us, we have a need of space, and we are low-income families.
Y ese lugar es bueno para nuestros niños se recreen y aprendan.
And also, we need spaces for our children, for their recreation and that they can learn.
Y aprendan y no estén viendo, no estén en la calle o viendo cosas que no deben de estar haciendo.
That we can keep them out of the street and from doing things that they shouldn't be doing.
Muchas gracias y espero que nos escuchen.
Thank you very much, and I hope for you to listen to us.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Cándido Santana, y venimos a representación de los campesinos del sur central farmer.
Good afternoon, my name is Carlos Santana, and we are representing the South Central Farmers.
Solamente queremos pedirles que nos dejen el terreno para seguir cultivando la tierra y seguir educando a nuestros hijos, enseñales cómo se siembra la tierra.
And we just want to ask to let us keep the land and to keep growing the land and showing our children how to cultivate the land.
Gracias y esperemos que nos ayuden.
Thank you, and we expect for you to help us.
Thank you. Esther.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Jesús Paniguas.
Good afternoon, my name is Jesús Paniguas.
Y vengo a suplicarles que nos escuchen, que nos oigan, nuestros ruegos, nuestras súplicas.
And I'm here to beg of you to listen to what we're asking. We want to keep to, we want to keep growing this land, cultivating it.
Nuestra familia de ahí comen también.
And we.
Entonces queremos.
Use this land to eat.
Nos sigan dando la oportunidad.
And we want you to give us the opportunity to continue growing the land.
Y gracias por la oportunidad que nos están dando para que nos escuchen.
Thank you for the opportunity to listen to our.
Muchas gracias.
Please, thank you, very kind of you.
Thank you. Alisa Avena, Jose Nicolas, Esther Enriquez.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es.
Good night, good morning.
Mi nombre es Alisa Avena.
My name is Alisa Avena, and I'm here representing.
De la 41 y la Alameda. Queremos que, por favor, si nos ayuden.
Farm of 41 and Alameda.
El jardín uno ya está mayor de edad y queremos que nos ayuden, nos escuchen.
We are older people, and we need your help so that we can keep it and so that we can preserve it, preserve it.
Gracias.
That's all, thank you.
Jose Nicolas, Esther Enriquez.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Jose Nicolas.
Good afternoon, my name is Jose Nicolas.
Vengo representando también al sur central, al jardín.
I'm also representing the South Central, the farmer.
Ah, pues queremos que, pues yo pienso que les suplicamos, pues que nos dejen ese lugar.
And what we want is, I want to explain to you that we want to keep that place.
Para seguir este cultivando, sembrando la tierra, este.
So that we can continue growing the land.
Para que la familia no, no anden en la calle, en drogas, como se ve mucho en el, pues donde quiera, ahí más aquí en Los Angeles.
So that the family members are, stay away from drugs and what we see here in Los Angeles.
Yo pienso que es muy importante para la familia, para los niños que empiezan a vivir.
And I think that's very important for the family and for the children who are starting to live their lives.
Para que no andan en drogas, no anden en malos pasos, no anden en cosas que no deben de ser.
So to keep away from doing drugs and doing things that they shouldn't be doing.
Muchas personas no visiten en ese lugar, y yo pienso que también para esas personas es muy importante lugar.
A lot of people come to visit us to those places, and I think for them is also important.
Es todo, gracias, espero que nos escuchen.
That's all, thank you, and I hope that you listen to us.
Thank you. Esther Enriquez, followed by Samuel Sanchez, Alberto Talotoa. Ms. Enriquez?
I'm speaking next.
Oh, you spoke, okay. That's right, Ms., thank you. Mr. Sanchez, Samuel Sanchez, you spoke already, thank you. Alberto?
Good evening, city council members. My name is Alberto Clatoa, and I was just going to get straight to the point. The South Central represents many benefits for the community. It's a cultural melting pot where all identities gather and live with each other and share the fruits of our labor, the food that is six in the South Central Farm. Why would we want soccer fields if the parks around our community are not safe? In the nine districts especially. My parents, when I was a child, wouldn't allow me to go to my local park by myself because there was drugs, alcohol, gang violence. Those are the things parents don't want their kids with. And this environment represents to the community that, opposite of that, it represents safety, food security, green space, family-oriented environment. So I'm here to ask you once again to immediately act, fundraise or analyze the sale so we could preserve this wonderful 14 acres, 14-acre oasis in South Central. It's a much-needed space. Y aquí estamos y no nos vamos.
Rosalie Gonzalez, followed by Tracy Larkins and Rosa Romero. Rosalie? Is Rosalie here? Okay. Tracy Larkins? Rosa Romero?
Hi, my name is Rosa Romero, and I represent a coalition of teachers that do teaching workshops at the farm for the last few years. Basically, I, we got into this mess because this was a community land that was being used for community use, and it was sold to a private developer without any community input. If there would have been community input from the beginning, we would have realized the assets of this community and what this garden means. It's not just about 350 families. It feeds the surrounding thousands of residents that live there with fresh food and nourishment. It also serves as a place where students come for field trips, to learn about gardening, to come for after school. They come after school and they have different classes, art and arts and crafts. It's a safe space. There aren't safe spaces in South LA. And instead of battling as to how we can do this, we know that there's, the proposal of the farmers is to make this a community space. It's not just about farmland. It's about turning it into a community center where we would have health fairs and college fairs and a place where the community can really come together and where we can have a safe space for our families to come.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment on this item. For everyone who has submitted cards, Madam Clerk, the item before us, I think we'll be going into executive session, is that correct, Ms. Perry?
I wanted to let the community speak on the record in the event that people had to leave, and Ms. Ms. Hahn was gracious enough to allow that to happen. And then, once the public comment was done, I agreed with her that we would go back to 16, and then, obviously, the city staff, we can go into our closed session after that.
Okay. All right, so public is now comment, yes?
And as long as we're still on this item, if I could, for the record, state that council will be authorized to go into closed session pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9A, to discuss litigation in the South Central Farmers Feeding Families versus City of Los Angeles matter, Los Angeles Superior Court, case number BC 311110.
So we will hold this on the desk until we go into executive session. So we will hold this on the desk until we go into executive session. Thank you very much. Madam, we called all the names, if you had not submitted a card, we were unable to. Oh, sorry, Tracy, I called it a couple times and no one came forward, so Ms. Larkin, please go ahead before we conclude.
Thank you very much for having this forum today, as you do every Friday. I saw a videotape of what the farm, the South Central Farm, looks like from the air. It kind of pulled back and went up and you could see that the South Central Farm, which is the largest urban garden in the country, is the lungs of that part of the neighborhood of Los Angeles. If you remove that, you remove a treasure. It's the environment, it's what's creating the air and the oxygen for people to breathe. How could anyone consider enriching a private developer who's already extremely wealthy by letting him have a boondoggle to purchase this for five million dollars and now to have negotiations for the amount that the man is asking for it? It's usury if we were in that industry. If the farm is going to be sold to the land trust, it shouldn't be sold, Mr. Horowitz should not receive more than a market value of net profit over the five million dollars that I believe he purchased it for. And anything more is outrageous and it's just wrong.
Thank you very much. Ms. Han, I had you on the queue, was that an area that you're on to speak?
No, and I know this is public comment, but I know you come every week asking us if we're listening, if we're paying attention, and we certainly are. This is a problem that I think we all wrestle with. I will know that it doesn't solve the problem and it may not be the answer, but I will tell you that I have identified almost four acres of open space in my council district that I have already made available if some of the farmers want to relocate or we can start a new one there. But I just want you to know that I did start looking as soon as you came and I've identified almost four acres that you're welcome to.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Colleagues, we'll hold that item on the desk. Thank you very much for all the speakers today, appreciate you being here. We're now going to, if we could, item thirty-five, we held that item because we had an amending motion. That motion has now been distributed. If we could take that item up now, Madam Clerk, colleagues, if anyone who would like to call that item special or speak on that item, otherwise, we will take the amending motion that has been distributed. No card. No public comment cards. Okay, colleagues, this is item thirty-five A, just to approve it, we had an amending motion, we're going to move, we will then move to item number sixteen. So, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That item has been approved with as amended. We'll now go to item number sixteen. Ms. Han, would you like to have public comment first?
I would, I will just set the stage a little bit, colleagues, and this is, a lot of people have been sitting through our council meeting, have a lot of issues, but our taxi cab drivers have really been here also, all morning. And I also remember to set the stage, a week ago, we were going to approve a contract with ATS, which is sort of the management of how our taxi cabs are operated and assigned and managed and disciplined at our LA International Airport. We were ready to approve that last week, but suddenly, I was approached by the LA Taxi Drivers Alliance, who said, Workers Alliance, who said they had some issues they wanted us to look at before we approved the contract. And I thought, just out of fairness, I always believed that we had to listen to all voices in Los Angeles, and out of a belief of fairness to them, I said I would postpone it for a week. Many of them came down a week ago and did not get to speak. So I promised them that they would have some time today to speak. Let's hear what they have to say. I have an amendment that I think I would like for you to approve when we approve this contract. So, without objection, I think twenty minutes for public comment would be good. And I would just caution the taxi drivers, when we say twenty minutes, the clock starts ticking. You guys know about meters. And so, if you could limit yourselves to one minute apiece, say what you have to say clearly and succinctly, but if you limit it to one, then twenty of you get to speak.
Thank you.
Flat rate.
Thank you, Ms. Han. I will call three names at a time, so, and then continue to do that so you can come up to the speaker there. The first three, Hamid Khan, Arshak Khan, and Sentayan Sillis, I'm going to mispronounce some of these names, I apologize. Sillis, sisix?
Sentayos Salazey.
Thank you, please, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to ask the taxi workers in the hall if they can stand up, please. Thank you, Paul, thank you. And they're going to stay standing till they get justice and commitment to fairness.
Will you give your name for the record?
My name is Hamid Khan, I'm with the organizing committee of the Los Angeles Taxi Workers Alliance and also at South Asian Network. On September thirteenth last year, it was a historic event for Los Angeles. That was the first time you all in these chambers got to hear from an invisible community, a community that for many years had been held down, has been abused because of the sleaze and corruption in the taxi industry. Today is another historic day in Los Angeles because today, the taxi workers, for the first time, have been involved in an organic grassroots movement to challenge against sleaze and corruption in the taxi industry. To challenge, to challenge an old boy's network that for years has been used to have their own way. So you're going to hear a few of those comments, but you will also hear from the other side how they discredit and delegitimize these efforts on the taxi workers. Thank you very much, Ms. Han, for all your support and thank you.
Thank you. Arshak?
My name is Arshalwan, I'm a member of Los Angeles Taxi Workers Alliance. I'm over here just to let you know only one story. Once I was called from ATS, they called me for their complaint. They did not give me complaint in writing, they gave me, they did not give me any decision in writing, they did not tell me where, when, and what happened. And they just punished me and they told me that you are suspended from airport for two weeks and next day, they put my picture on the pillar just that I am a criminal. And I will say that today is Patrick Day and Happy Norris Day and unfortunately, it's a renewal of ATS contact day too. And I just request to the council member, honor of member, that when you please, please, when you renew it, just please make sure that ATS should stop this abuse at human beings and they should treat us being a human being, as Han said, that we are the first impression for the Los Angeles Airport. Thank you very much.
Thank you. After our next speaker, Khabar Dill Singh, Shafik Sufi, and Zahid, cannot, sorry, I can't read your writing on the end, so please, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sentayos Salazey. I'm also a member of LA Taxi Workers Alliance. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you. Thank you, Ms. Han. I have only few things to say. One thing is, we're not there to counsel or to do anything about ATS. What we need is, in the contract, there is nothing for the drivers. There is a lot of things to oppress, to step on drivers. We just said, let us put something for the rights of the drivers. That's what we all say. We're not against, we're not against ATS, we're not going to take over the ATS. We didn't say all of that. They mislead the public and the drivers and to divide and rule, they keep, to whip the rules. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Hadeeb Singh, good afternoon, and I'm thankful to Mr. President and Mr. Han and all of you guys, and they give us opportunity that we come here and share our problem with the people, with the public. And especially when we go on the airport, we feel like a robber. We are not supposed to speak any word, we have to close our mouth and work. Especially when we go on the terminal, we are not supposed to educate the customer that the shuttle goes free, they're across the street. ATS force us, they just want their two hundred and fifty cent and force us to take the customer. We are not, we are not allowed to educate the customer that shuttle goes free. If the customer in a hurry, he wants to cab, we are happy to serve him. But if the customer has choice, he has a right to choose, either he wants to go to cab or he wants to take a free shuttle. But we are not allowed to speak any word, we are not allowed to speak our mouth. So I just suggest to ATS, please change this kind of rules, they harass the workers, the taxi driver, and that's our rights, so they can create friendly atmosphere.
Thank you.
My name is Shafik, I'm a Sufi, and I'm with the Taxi, Los Angeles Taxi Workers Alliance, one of the organizing member. And I had to say so many things, but the time got too short. And I saw something here in this forum, so I said, let me share with my fellow drivers that who says we don't have our voice or our representative in this room? When I saw Mr. Rosendahl holding a senior lady hand and going inside, I said, oh my God, here you go, we have our representative here. That's what we do every day in all the cities to serve all the senior ladies, so we have our representative here. And number two, very briefly, it's hard to say, please help us to solve the taxi driver problem, especially at LAX. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Zahid, followed by Julie Su, Martin Saratusegui, and Sayed Janasaha Samar.
Thank you, President and council member, especially Mr. Rosendahl and Mrs. Janasah and Shunigru, the Transportation Secretary. You are really great and this is the first time, when we came over here on September thirteenth, you guys promised us that you're going to hear, you're going to hear us and help us out with all the corruption that are going on in the cab industry. There is a contract due for ATS, which mentioned over here, that I won't bring it to your attention, it says that taxi cab service at airport are conducted orderly, legally, fairly, honestly, responsibly, and in accordance with all city approved operating rules, but it's not being done. If it's in my hand, I will strike down this contract, but because of the time limit we have, we're not going to ask that. And there's also even, I have people from ATS who are complaining about leaving wage ordinance of City of Los Angeles. They are working over there for the last twenty years and paying nine dollar per hour, so that they're breaking all the rules and regulations. I really appreciate all of you guys working with us, thank you.
Thank you very much. Julie Su? Hi, Julie.
Morning. I am an attorney at the Asian Pacific American Legal Center and a member of the organizing committee of the Los Angeles Taxi Workers Alliance. I want to applaud Councilwoman Han for this motion. As you have heard and will hear from the testimony of the taxi workers, who you yourselves have acknowledged as being an unofficial welcoming committee for the city, the abuses at LAX, at the hands of ATS, are really rampant. And it's important not only to pass this motion, but to consider and adopt an amended contract that builds in protections, that builds in accountability for ATS. Los Angeles International Airport is known for many things, but as you will learn today, it is also characterized by sweatshop abuses of taxi workers, including a climate of fear, retaliation, lack of due process, and a largely immigrant workforce that is treated like criminals. We have a document at the LA Taxi Workers Alliance that we have given to the councilwoman entitled "A Call for Improvement of Working Conditions at LAX for Taxi Workers," and there are numerous items on it that we look forward to working with the Los Angeles World Airports on to incorporate into the contract and to come back to you so that the airport will no longer be a sweatshop, but will be a place worthy of this great city and of the thousands of taxi workers who deserve our respect and our thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Su.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Martin Satrusstugi, to be followed by Sayed Jahansha Samar.
Yeah, my name is Martin Satrusstugi. I was accused of driving the child two blocks away from the school after the mother gave me ten dollars. I challenge anybody in this room, if I ever faced, confronted mother of the child, they ever see me in their entire life. And they, they make me go to all the way from the valley to Gardena for nothing. And also, I was accused of not accepting the coupons on Beverly Plaza Hotel, it happened to be one thirty in the morning, when I was sleeping. Bandit used my cab number, same identical number, and also, they called me to the office for a hearing, for a few papers, so they had no respect, no dignity. I don't know why they accused me so many things, so many times, and I want you to put in the book rules and regulation, they compensated me for two hundred dollars. Every time they call us, they can approve, we did nothing wrong. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Sayed Jahansha Samar.
My name is Jahansha Samar, I'm driving eleven years taxi. I have been harassing, abusing with cab, taxi ATS. Of course, numbers of cab drivers behind me are same as reason here. One day, I had one guy with a big runout, infected suitcase, I don't know what it was inside, and he was dedicated, bring the suitcase in the backseat, and then I did not let him to put in the backseat and just he put the clothes, zip up clothes in the trunk. I told him, said, the trunk is empty and made for suitcase, and he was dedicated to bring, and he called DOT, DOT sent a fax to DOT, ATS, and the ATS, this man called me there for abusing me, harassing me, and he put me three months probation. I want to know what is the reason he asked me there for harassing, abusing for three months probation? He didn't tell me not to dismiss this case. What is the reason? Doesn't make sense. And number two, I have issue, is green uniform control officer at the airport, they are casting and abusing, harassing cab driver who works for airport police. That should be stopped immediately. I'm one of the California's voter, please. I appreciate your testimony.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Gary Vogon is our next speaker. And then, Natavaya Ahmed. Gary Vogon?
I submitted my card also for this issue. I'm Bella De Soto.
But we'll do it in order, Ms. Soto. Please, our next speaker is Gary Vogon.
My name is Gary Vogon and I'm a driver for United Independent Taxi Cab Drivers, and I'd like to speak to the Taxi Cab Workers Alliance proposal here, and I think it's overdue that we have proposals like these, that there be due process for the drivers with the authorized taxi cab service. I've been a driver since nineteen eighty-eight, I've been in this industry almost eighteen years, and this is the first time I've seen drivers come up here to the city council and agitate for their rights. All is not well in taxiland. Two and a half years ago, the drivers struck the LAX and the authorized taxi cab service over the addition of a sixth letter day, and we won. And I think the only way that we can redress many of our grievances is collective action. And I really compliment the Taxi Cab Workers Alliance for putting these issues on the table here. I've been a labor organizer and I've been in the labor movement most of my life, and I have seen the abuses here with ATS. The fact is, we have no due process for our grievances and for any of our disciplinary procedure. If I've spoken long enough?
Thank you.
And I just hope in the next sixty days that you'll come back here with a review of these amendments.
Thank you very much, sir. Natavaya Ahmed. And following Mr. Ahmed will be Eugene Schmer.
My name is Natavaya Ahmed, I'm the duly-elected president of Independent Taxi, which runs about two hundred forty-six cabs in City of LA. From this position that we are put in here, we are pushed behind a rock and a hard place. On one side, as a management of this company that elected by the members, we have an agreement with the City of LA that is an ordinance, a franchise, and there are rules for us to abide by. Mrs. Han was right when she said that we have to put the best place, the best face for our customers coming to LAX. These rules are made for that purpose. The rules are to have a clean cab, honest drivers, to put them on the stand and take care of our customers. There are abuses, say it, yes. I'm going to say what my friend yesterday said. He said that somebody screamed, "The sky should be blue." And instead of paranoia, everybody around him said, yes, it should be blue, it should be blue, and when they look, it's blue. All these rules, all these due processes are already in place. We have few disgruntled drivers that are advocating for anarchy, we're not going to stand by because we have to answer to you, to our franchise, so that we will serve the public the way we are mandated, the way we are. the way we are mandated, the way we have signed this contract. We don't tolerate any abuse to our drivers.
Can I please ask you to?
And we have the board of the ATS. ATS, give me one second to define ATS. Who is ATS? ATS is a nine franchise company, they are board members of this one. We just want to ensure good public service.
Thank you, sir. Eugene Schmer.
Thank you for giving me the chance to speak. My name is Eugene Schmer. I'm a Polish Jew immigrant who was naturalized in 1976. I have a master's degree from City University of New York in computers, and I'm driving a cab for three or four months because of ergonomics. Ha ha. I'm a systems guy. I understand computer systems, I understand systems, because I've done it for 20 years. I've been driving a cab for a few months, but I've seen a lot. ATS basically rules the lives of cab drivers, because you have six days a month in which you can make money. If it wasn't for those six days a month, one wouldn't be able to afford to be a cab driver. And that's true more so to these people than me, because I'm single, no children, they have families. There's 2,500 families we're speaking of here. Giving ATS a five-year term contract, a monopoly, I'm sorry, but the President of the United States only gets four years. Okay? I don't have enough time to tell you everything I can. So I might be happy to come back here every time you guys meet and enlighten you. I'm lucky, I can afford it. So you might be seeing more of me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chris Harvey is our next speaker, and then Steve Nyman.
Is there a Chris Harvey?
Chris Harvey?
No.
There's some other speakers, we do have your card, Bella, we will get to it, I promise. Chris Harvey.
Hi, my name is Chris Harvey. I've been driving a cab for seven years in Los Angeles. No one is asking the main point is, where is all the money that's generated by ATS going to? We figure the average driver spends about $25 to $30 a day, or about times six days a month, so it's 30, it's like $180, maybe $2,000 a year to ATS. And maybe that's $6 to $8 million a year revenue, and the drivers see none of that money. This is the big issue, is everybody else is making money off of ATS, the city's making money, the companies are making money, the drivers are not making, getting any of that revenue, and they're doing all the work. They're collecting that revenue, paying ATS. And the problem is, it's been going on for 20, 25 years. Mr. Bezad has had his job since about 1983, I think. So 83, is that correct? 83? Okay. Why can't the drivers, why can't they just give the drivers healthcare insurance? There's enough money in there, in the system to pay for that.
Thank you. If I can ask you to conclude?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Steve Nyman?
Thank you. I'm Steve Neiman, I'm legal counsel for ATS. I've heard a lot of rhetoric here today, it sounds good, but... Yes, I've heard a lot of rhetoric here today, it sounds good, but most of it's just not true. I don't have much time, so I bought pictures from ATS, which I invite the council members to receive, so they can look at the holding lot and decide for themselves whether or not these are sweatshop conditions. Contrary to what the attorney said, as far as I know, I've never seen the attorney at ATS, I don't think she knows anything about ATS, other than what's been fed to her. ATS is actually a model for other cities. New York City, Washington DC, have all sent delegations to study ATS, because it's such a fine, efficient operation. The reason ATS has been operating for 15 or 20 years now, and the reason its contract is repeatedly renewed, is because it does do such a fine job, and because it is held in such high esteem. Councilwoman Han was right when she said that taxi cab drivers are the first face of Los Angeles to visitors to our city. ATS is here enforcing your rules. The rules that ATS enforces are the rules from the Department of Transportation. There is an elaborate system for due process, for hearing for the drivers, I'll be happy to explain it to you, if you want to give me more time. Every time before the budget, the contract is renewed, we go through an extensive audit of our finances. They've never found anything wrong with our finances.
Thank you, sir.
I'm more than happy to elaborate on anything, if anybody has any questions.
And we'll make sure if anybody has those questions, just stand by. Michael Grasso, please. Shh. Can we please have order in council chambers? Michael Grasso is our next speaker, and then Tamarat Chaloy.
My name is Bella De Soto.
Bella, I've said that we get to you, we have you in order. Excuse me. Excuse me. Michael Grasso is our next speaker. We have many cards, Michael Grasso is our next speaker, please.
Thank you very much for opportunity here. I really, Mr. Rosendahl, Mrs. Han, Mr. Garcia, you guys are wonderful. On top of that, on behalf of all the driver, really, I want to appreciate Steve, the lawyer from Legal Foundation, and Betty and Judy, they're all wonderful people out here. And I've been working, I've been working a taxi cab company for the last 24 years, and I am here simply to say one thing. And Mr. Bezad, I've been working with him around 1982, he was a boss for me, and really, thing has to be changed. We all can go to him and tell him, "Mr. Bezad, you have to change it." He will listen to us. And, you know, he have work also, where we are right now, I mean, the way it's shaped by cab companies, there is his contribution also always. God bless the late ATM manager, Mr. Keith Conway. And the abuses is not only anywhere else. And the abuses, you have to look at it anymore, about the taxi cab company industry by themselves, because the way they're present to you about a cab companies through hasslers, I'm sorry, I should say.
If you can conclude the sentence. Okay. Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, with time. This is Ms. Han Yumu for 20 minutes, we are now a minute over a 20-minute period here. There still are about 30 cards, I believe, left. If there's no motion to extend, that will close our public comment.
I'll wait for five more minutes.
Okay, an extension, we have an extension for five more minutes, we appreciate people's patience. Tamarat Chaloy, please.
My name is Mike Grasso.
Hold on, I'm sorry, one second. Yeah, Mr. Weisler?
All sides of this debate are heard, I don't know if you're, or how you do that in terms of...
We've been looking at just the order that they're here.
This issue is new to me, I'm very interested in hearing all sides, and we've been hearing one side, I just want to make sure we hear all sides to this. I don't know if there's a way of you determining who's speaking on both sides.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on, everybody. The way the cards are filled out, people either say for or against on the cards, and we generally try to do in proportion to the cards that are here. There are many, many, many cards that say neither for nor against, so we've just been calling those, I believe that's how Ms. Gruhl started it as well. If there are individuals that council members would like to call up and be heard from, that is under their prerogative as well to do. But everything else, besides two that say against, everything else is either general or blank, so there's no way for us to be able to determine that single-handedly, so we rely on council members to do that work and let us know, and/or yield their own time. But otherwise, under public comment, under the procedures that we have, we'll go in order, and always try to do it in proportion to the two sides. Mr. Weston?
Mr. President, I want to say that I'm not suggesting to the drivers that I'm with you or against you, but I am requesting, so that I can understand this issue, that we afford the representative from ATS a few more minutes, because I gotta, in order for me to make a decision, I need to hear it both ways. So if we could give him a few minutes, I think that would be fair.
If I could formalize the move, then it would be to suspend the rules on the amount of time, unless somebody wanted to yield their own time. Mr. Rosendahl said five minutes. Now, if it's five minutes, and if we're saying three minutes or so, we need to hear from one particular perspective, that leaves only two minutes of other cards, is that all right with you, Mr. Rosendahl?
It's fine with me, I, we need to hear from this side of you, though we're gonna speak about it all after they finish the public comment.
Okay, what we'll do then is, let's open the roll in suspending the rules, please, in order to do this slightly differently.
I've been waiting just a second.
We know that, ma'am, hold on. There are many people there, I can show you the stack of cards, there are many people who've been waiting, hold on. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote on suspension of rules.
11 ayes.
Okay. We have now suspended our rules in order to allow three minutes? Is that what you asked for, Mr. Weston, for the representative from ATS? And is this the representative right here? Sir, are you, you are the ATS representative, sir?
We're both fine with that.
I'm a representative, my name is Michael Grasso, I'm for the drivers.
Okay, hold on, one second before we start. Is this, Mr. Weston, is this the person that you'd like, or is there somebody else who would be a better...
Yeah, Tom.
Okay. Okay, hold on one second, sir, if we can just, consistent, ask one representative of ATS to please step forward for three minutes of, and we will return to other speakers for the remainder of the two minutes that we have left. Okay. Thank you. Start the clock at three minutes, please, and five minutes total.
Good afternoon. My name is Bezad Bitarov. 30 years ago, I came to this country from Iran, and I drove cab for three years, I went to three graduate school and financed it by driving cab. So I was cab driver myself, still I consider myself cab driver. At ATS, we do not make a rule. We just enforce 90% Department of Transportation rule and regulation, and the other 10% is airport rules. We do not have any rule to enforce. Hearing procedure, we notify cab company by faxing the complaint on Fridays. Cab companies, they have time to Tuesday notify the driver and give him copy of the complaint. If driver do not receive the complaint by cab company, he can come to office, we make a copy, we hand him a copy. Four years ago, one cab driver went to Department of Transportation and complained he got two days suspended. Department of Transportation called me to commissioner meeting, they asked about procedure. I brought all paperwork and procedure and submitted to them. And since that time, we posted in bulletin board all rule and regulation governing the hearing, all procedure regarding the hearing, all suspension schedule has been posted in bulletin boards. And also, driver, they have a right not to have a hearing at ATS. He can walk over there and simply say, "Send my case to DOT." We will refer him to DOT. After hearing, still he has a right to appeal. He can appeal it to DOT, we send it to Department of Transportation and put the sentence aside. I have been reading the letter has been passed by cab drivers, this association. They said there is no drinking water at the holding lot. I have a picture here for water fountain, for last 20 years has been there. They said there is no seat table at the holding lot. We have 75 seats, 13 table available at rest area. They said it's hot and bad environment to work over there. Last 10 years, we have 500 best type roses, we planted around the holding lot for them. There is a picture here in my briefcase, if you guys wants to see. The problem is, the rule and regulation that we enforce is not ATS rule and regulation. That's DOT rule. Can I continue?
That's the three minutes that we have arranged, is there a motion to extend that? If not, we would move on with the cards. If there's no motion, I would ask you to conclude then, please. Thank you. Thank you for your understanding. Okay. Our next card we have here is Tamarat Chaloy. Oh, you spoke already? Okay, I'm sorry.
I don't have a chance to speak.
I'm sorry, you already spoke, sir, so I think we mistook the two cards, you were next, sir. Mr. Grasso.
My name is Michael Grasso. I'm a driver for City Cab and a supervisor for Checker Cab Company. I've been in this business about approximately 31 years this August. You know, we all got problems as a driver out there, it's on both sides, it's not a give and take here. We do have some issues, but they can be worked out within the companies, and that's what we have the companies for. When it comes to small little things, if these here drivers have problems, probably all these drivers have been rode up, or, you know, some of us don't get caught, we deserve to be rode up. But you know what, if we don't like our job, then we just need to quit. That's almost like the bottom line here. They all make, we all make good money, but if we got a problem, we all can go to our companies, we have managers, we have presidents in these companies to work with. They know the problems, like the ties, we don't like the ties, it should be optional. That's just an opinion. It looks good, these people see us in a tie, but you know what, when they leave the airport, they don't see a tie again. There's just small things, they take small trips, they want to have a minimum out here. Leaving the airport, we go for small rides, let the shuttles have it. Bottom line is, we're all together, colors doesn't mean nothing. You already tried us right now with Open City, it works, all the drivers get along.
Thank you, sir.
We're all one color, we're working together.
Appreciate you. Bella De Soto is next. Does she just leave? Ms. De Soto going once, going twice? Okay. And our final speaker, Daniel Casa.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to explain my stand on this issue. Really, what I serve this problem for once and for all, you have to listen to the drivers, because the drivers are the one who is enduring this unfair system of the airport. But I don't have with the personalities who run the ATS, but I have the problem with the system. The system is not fair for the drivers, so the system need to be fixed, need to be reformed. And to reform this, I guess you have to give a balanced thought and see the bottom, what the lawyer say here, doesn't represent the drivers, or those guys, mine, not the drivers, I mean, represents the whole drivers, but you have to get from every corner of the drivers and the problem, and then try to solve it. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes public comment for now, I want to read into the record the names of the folks we were unable to get to, but I do want to read the names into the record. Martin Menukian, Jovanes Sargisian, Fred Sharifi, Ali Jano Youssefi, Michael Mirmelsh Dea, excuse me if I mispronounced that, Mekeb Sefu, Balay Yowandater, Arthur Taylor, Martin Shatakian, Steven Rozansky, Gary Feinberg, Andrea Calabrese, Avtar Singh, Harvinda Sainai, Vreg Alwandian, Abdurrahim Ahmed, Amelok Singh, Harginder Singh, Elchonon Shaghalov, Ray McGreevy, Bezad Bitarov, Ken Spiker, and Mike Madani. Our first speaker on this will be the Chair of our Transportation Committee, Ms. Gruhl.
Mr. President, colleagues, today we have an item that is specific to the Los Angeles airports and a contract there, but this is a much larger issue as discussed today, that exists whether you service the airport, or whether you service downtown, or the San Fernando Valley. As discussed, I think it was September, Mr. Rosendahl and I asked that we have public comment during an item, and we were increasing the rate as far as gas, gasoline, and to be able to respond to that, because we heard from many of the taxi drivers, the challenges that they face every single day, and how important it is for us to hear it. And I think I have shared with many of you, that you had a council that was listening to your concerns. And as someone spoke today, you came and you're here again to share with us that information. And as Chair of the Transportation Committee, this is an issue I feel very strongly about, that we need to look in depth about what is occurring. A couple of items. One, at 2 o'clock today for our council, I'm meeting with the Chair, President of the Taxi Cab Commission that we have in the City of Los Angeles, to better understand their responsibility and relationship on the taxi cab issue. Secondly, and Ms. Han and I spoke about this last week when she continued the item, I shared with her that I had Gary Blazy, who previously ran Legal Aid Foundation, is now at UCLA, is doing a survey. I'm interested. Any of the cab drivers are here today, have any of you participated in that survey with UCLA? Any of you that are here? Okay. Okay, some of you. So they came, and colleagues, what they did, and they, at this side actually, because as they explained it to me, cabs across the city go every four days, is that correct? Five days, every five days, to that location. So we're able to get...
Four days.
You want four days, okay. But the idea was to share, and we have, the survey results, or what we want to do is to be able to bring those survey results, and ask them every kind of question you can imagine, from issues that relate directly to them, to, we added a few about, if you have some intersections you would improve on transportation, how would you do that? But we want to, and I tried to reach Gary Blazy this morning, to see what the timeline is for those survey results. Ms. Han and I have talked about potentially doing a joint hearing, having a discussion again, understanding the rules and regulations, and how it impacts our taxi cab drivers. Because again, today we're on one specific contract, and that's a period of time you have every four days or five days that you can get... have every four days or five days that you can get there. So I want to make it clear that this issue that we're dealing with today is much bigger and broader and that we're committed to having the discussion about how to ensure that the taxi cab drivers we have here in Los Angeles are treated fairly, that we have a system that works. And I think it's been a very long time that we've actually had that broader discussion. I don't know, and I see our President of our Taxi Cab Commission is here early. Mr. Tisik, how are you? Nice to see you. I was just mentioning your name. I don't know if you were in the room when I did, that we were meeting at two o'clock today. But we have someone, is Tom Drishler here from DOT? Thank you, Tom, if you could come up for a minute, I know my time has gone up. This is Tom from our Department of Transportation. Could you just briefly, again, we're talking specifically about this contract, but the role that DOT plays in the regulation of not only the taxi kind of in general in their locations, but also related to appeals and resolving problems that we've seen today and Ms. Hahn and I have spoken about, which is a particular cab driver is, you know, being docked for time or has challenges. Where's there a way in which they can come to the city of Los Angeles to deal with some of those grievances?
Yes, well, thank you. Taxi drivers can always contact the Department of Transportation if they're dissatisfied with what's going on at ATS. I know many of these drivers personally, many of them know me personally, many of them call me on a regular basis. We have open lines of communication.
But is there official process by which they know their rights are addressed?
Yes. The rules that are posted at ATS, and by the way, they are enforcing the rules that have been put into place by the Board of Taxi Cab Commissioners, before then the Board of Transportation Commissioners over the years. They can appeal any hearing that they have at ATS to DOT if they want to. Generally, in fact, it's very unusual that they ever would because most of the time ATS imposes a probationary period for a driver for a given violation, whereas the Department of Transportation would have imposed days off out of work or perhaps monetary fines. I would like you all to keep in mind that we're here as Department of Transportation to protect the public, to protect the consumers that use to take over eight million taxi cab trips every year. And we have a rulebook that has about three hundred fifty rules or so, and they're all there for a very particular reason. Everyone got there for a reason. And it's our obligation to encourage the industry to provide the best possible service to the public. And ATS plays a very integral role in enforcing our rules at the airport. I mean, the one criticism that we continually have from at DOT is that they're letting drivers off easily for offenses that we would, we would give them a much harsher sentences for. But the thing that's really good about ATS is that, you know, they give every passenger a trip ticket with a phone number that they can call. So if they have a problem, they can contact ATS immediately and they could resolve it there. But they also have notices inside the cabs, they can contact DOT if they have a problem. Now, in my career, I've handled many hundreds of public complaints. And my staff is, together with my staff, we've handled many thousands. But it's amazing, we have actually very few complaints coming out of the airport, given the volume of traffic that's done through taxi cabs. There's about a million and a half trips a year. And we just, we get really a relative handful of complaints. And a lot of that has to do with what I think is a very efficient job that's done by ATS.
Well, Mr. President, this item went, just went to Ms. Hahn's committee. It didn't come to our committee where, to discuss some of the broader issues, but Ms. Hahn and I have talked about the importance of that. And I think we are obviously concerned about ensuring that our passengers are well taken care of. As those of us that were recently in Washington DC and took several cabs across the city, talked about the convenience of being able to hail a cab in a, you know, very quick fashion in some areas and, again, a review of our taxi cab system. But I also think we have to make sure that the taxi cab drivers who we have here are also being treated fairly, both because they are constituents as well as our tourists. And I think that's what you're sensing here today is we want to, and I don't think any of us know for sure, you know, which, where all those issues lie, but that you've seen here, there's a commitment by this council, by the Chair of the Commerce Committee and the Chair of the Transportation Committee and other members, that we want to, again, review this because challenges have been, you know, put out there about effectiveness and responsibility on both sides. And so I think there's an interest and we will, I know I have gone way over my time. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for letting me do that.
Counselor, if I may, we welcome a dialogue. I was directed yesterday by the Board of Taxi Cab Commissioners to convene another meeting with taxi drivers and allow them to come in and air their grievances and complaints. But we have an open channel. We have regular Board of Taxi Cab Commissioner meetings, we have driver subcommittee meetings, we have subcommittee meetings where we invite drivers in. The lines of communication are open and DOT is a resource for that. And we're ready, willing, and able to work.
And I think you have new chairs of committees and you have new council members here and issues that have been brought to us on both sides, that I think we want to make sure we put everything under a microscope again and review all of that. And this is, I guess, putting on notice that it's going to be an issue that we are going to talk about as we go forward. Because if they're putting out, if ATS is actually responding to the rules of the city, we want to see if that, again, meshes what we want to do to best serve the public and to make sure our, also our taxi drivers are taken care of as well. So we look forward to the survey results that will come out and we hope the timeline we will share with all of you to see what some of those issues have been as well. And appreciate that ATS allowed them to do that, to spend time and have access onto that site to be able to do that survey.
I spent about an hour with the people from the survey myself.
Great, okay. So Ms. Hahn and I will follow up. I may come up and speak a few minutes again, but this is an issue we feel very passionately about. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosenadall is our next speaker, to be followed by Ms. Hahn for a second time unless somebody else presses the button for first. Mr. Rosenadall.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to set the record straight a little bit, somebody mentioned that I was holding the hand of a little lady and taking her in the back. That's one of the women on the verge of being evicted from Lincoln Place, and I'm against that kind of actions by AMCO. And also for the record, and I didn't appreciate it when the attorney for ATS downplayed Julie Sue. Julie Sue is an incredible lawyer with the Asian Pacific American Legal Center. And frankly, she received a MacArthur grant and I, when I was the television guy, did a personal best with her as a great human being that does great things. So Julie, we're with you. Now, as for the issue, I just talked to the Chair of the Taxi Cab Commission and indeed, he said that he's calling for an investigation to look into the facts. There's two groups here that we need to be clear about, okay? First thing we need to know about DOT and three hundred and fifty rules, okay? I want to know what these rules are, I want to know how those rules came in place, and frankly, I would like to have it in the sunshine, in a public hearing, and have the taxi cab drivers and the ATS to be there to see if some of those rules should be thrown out, modified, changed, or whatever. I certainly agree with my two colleagues, the Chair of Transportation and the Chair of Commerce, and I have to thank Janice Hahn because this all happened at the last minute. We were here and the taxi cab drivers themselves showed up. We were just about to approve, frankly, of the authorizing taxi cab service, better known as ATS, and we said, wait a minute, we want to know what this issue is about before we just slam dunk approve things. So what we need to do, and we will do this as a council, is look into the matter upside down, backwards and forwards, and see what the real issues are and what really needs to be done. We are going to authorize LAWA, which is the group that runs the airport for our great city, to investigate these issues. And we're going to give them, I'm assuming our colleagues approved the great motion that Chairwoman Hahn has put forward. We're going to look into this sixty days with LAWA doing an investigation. At the same time, my colleague Chair of Transportation will look into the DOT relationship with this. We'll vet it among ourselves here and we'll see where we go. Because the number one concern I have is the dignity of our cab drivers. I can tell you, most recently, when I was in a cab, what I was so, what I was so happy about was the cab driver was very willing to take me from LAX to Mar Vista, which is just a minute away, so to speak, and know that he could go back in the queue and go back up and get another passenger. So I know they're cooperating and I appreciate that end of it. Now, I am not saying ATS isn't doing a good job. I'm holding judgment on the whole issue of what that's all about until this process goes forward. Because indeed, a lot of folks are looking at ATS as the leader in the nation for efficiency and quickness and service. So we'll see, we'll balance it out. That's our job as elected officials, is to find out what the facts are, what the issues are, and make the remedies if we have to make them. That's where I stand on the issue, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilman Rosenadall. What you said was exactly right. And I, if you hadn't said it, I was also going to take the opportunity to stand up for Julie. I did not appreciate the ATS attorney disparaging Julie in that way, there was no need for that. And I have been in meetings with her, I found her to be extremely intelligent, articulate, and knowledgeable. So there was no need for that. And I will say, colleagues, this is, you know, we hate to do this, you know, last minute. It seems like that happens a lot to us. But I think we ought not to look at it, that they came to the party late or they should have shown up earlier. The fact of the matter is, they have, I have heard voices about this debate and I believe that we all owe it to both sides, to ATS and to the drivers. We owe it to LAWA, we owe it to DOT, to take sixty days here and really continue these discussions. Some people want to call them investigations. I'd actually like to call for in that sixty days, maybe a hearing where we can publicly air out a lot of these issues. Maybe that looks like a joint committee between transportation and tourism, commerce and trade. But we have an opportunity to let people come and speak about these issues. You know, no one's perfect, you know, ATS isn't perfect. I'm sure some, there might have been a few complaints out there from the public about some taxi cab drivers, well, you're not perfect. You know, we know our city departments aren't perfect, but I think there's room for improvement and there's room for discussion. And colleagues, I think what these drivers are asking for are some basic things that I think you would agree with. This holding parking lot where they go every five days, I mean, they're asking for things like making sure they have clean restrooms there, making sure they have clean, fresh, you know, water to drink, you know, some basic things that I don't think anybody would be against. And the problem is that ATS may say, we already have that, but there's no really way in this contract to hold anybody accountable. So I think what we want is transparency, we want accountability, we certainly want efficiency in running this system, I think that's important. We certainly want to keep public safety at the forefront of this, but I believe there is room for improvement and I believe there is room to relook at this. You know, even the grievance procedure or the rules, frankly, I was given a photo of how these rules and procedures are displayed behind a glass in a bulletin board. You have to have, you know, super reading glasses to even really read all that. They're asking for, why don't those be handed out individually to all the drivers? What's wrong with that? I think their due process is a little concerning. I don't know at all, I'm learning. But even so far as when they appeal a decision, that appealing according to the current procedure has to be in writing, not from them, but from the president of their company, has to appeal their decision in writing. And it's the presidents of the company that sit on this ATS management board. So as you can see, is there abuse? I don't know. Is there room for abuse? Possibly. But I think those are the things that we want to vet in the next sixty days. And if you'll agree with me on that and approve this motion, what we're asking for today is to approve this contract. But in the next sixty days, I want us to, call it what you will, an investigation, a discussion, a public hearing, a way to air out all these issues. And then at the end of those sixty days, I want LAWA, along with DOT, to report back to us on what these discussions have yielded, what significant actions could be taken to improve workplace conditions for the taxi cab drivers and how they can be incorporated as amendments into this ATS contract. And if we don't feel, and we'll be the judge, if we don't feel that has been in good faith, if we don't feel that there has been honesty, then I am also recommending that the Department, that the Airport Commission terminate that contract.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Our next speaker is Mr. Reyes.
And I think that gives us, that gives us leverage.
Mr. Reyes and then Mr. Weesar.
First, I want to thank my colleagues for bringing this issue forward. I think it's important that we do have a balanced approach. We are accountable for the funds and how we structure these discussions and these contracts. So in that vein, I would request if we could have an interim report to talk about the structure of what we're analyzing. We've heard a lot today and there's a lot of areas we can drill down to in terms of what are the issues. If we can get a report back, working with the Committee Chair and Councilman Hahn, in terms of what is it that we're looking at? I mean, we've heard a lot of different issues today, some different areas that we can go into. If we can get an interim report to talk about the structure of how this contract will be addressed, if we're going to extend it anyway, what are we going to get a report back on? So that way, we do get the report back, we make sure we don't miss any critical issues or areas of concern. So that would be my friendly amendment, if we can ask for a report back in the interim on the short term, to understand the parameters of discussion and what are the issues that we're dealing with in the context of this contract.
If there's no objection to that, that'll be accepted as a friendly amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Weesar.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to make it clear what we're voting on. So the amendment actually asks that we adopt the contract and go forward with that, but to request that they continue the discussions on the working conditions and to get report back within sixty days. Okay, I wanted to clear that up because our last date for council action is March 24th. Initially, I thought this was going to not allow us to act on this, which would put us in an awkward position. I do have a question about the last item on the amendment, which is, and it's pretty broad and vague, what we're asking the Airport Commissioners to do. It says to the Los Angeles Board of Airport Commissioners, to terminate the contract with ATS if LAWA is unable to report back with contract amendments that would achieve significant improvements in the working conditions for taxi drivers at LAX. What we're doing is allowing a pretty broad spectrum for them to define what working conditions are and allowing them to have those discussions to identify what the working conditions are. I could foresee, and I'm just putting this on the table, a situation where we don't agree with what the working conditions are because it's so broad as to what we're giving that discretion. So if you could hold my time and allow Ms. Hahn to address that, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, I can't hold time on another member, but.
Oh, good, I'm learning something new today.
Yield it. To you, whether you want to yield it.
I'll just clarify this since I was the maker of this.
Well, can I do this, can I ask staff to clarify that and then they'll ask Ms. Hahn to clarify that?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, I'll hold your time for that. Go ahead, if we can bring staff up on this?
I'll just.
Go ahead, Ms. Hahn.
Decide what those conditions are.
I have time paused, don't worry.
Well, at least, if I could ask staff, you could hold my time because I think they're going to be directed to do this and if they have an understanding of what that means.
Michael Biagi with Los Angeles World Airports. And we believe that as the taxi drivers have indicated today, they deserve a safe place to work that is free of discrimination and harassment. And what we want to do is take a look at the rules that are already in place, see where we can improve not only the rules themselves, but the dissemination of that information to the drivers. As Councilmember Hahn pointed out, currently, the rules are posted but not handed out. So let's hand them out so they all have a copy. Other things that they're asking for, clean, safe drinking water, restrooms that are cleaned regularly and serviced properly, those things can be included in the health and safety concerns that the taxi drivers have put forth. One thing I would like to clarify is that this is a holding. One thing I would like to clarify is that this is a holding lot where the drivers spend approximately 20 or 30 minutes as they cycle through to pick up passengers at the airport. So they don't spend a lot of time there, and some of the things that they're requesting, quite honestly, might not be feasible. But we will, in good faith, work with them to look at areas of improvement, to look at some of the environmental concerns that they have raised, and to make something that they're proud to come to and service the passengers that want taxi service out of Los Angeles International Airport.
And you hit that correctly. I was concerned that we're predetermining an outcome here because we're saying, if you don't agree with the working conditions to improve them, it terminates the contract. But there might be some instances where there is no agreement, and the commission's going to have the full authority to terminate the contract. So... But it doesn't, it's not going to come back to council to do the final determination. It's just terminate it there. So I'm just concerned that if there isn't an agreement on some working conditions, that it's going to be terminated. And when I'm hearing here, there probably isn't going to be a total agreement on what those working conditions are. So I would just simply want to add that we bring it back to council in the event that they, that the commission not have a full authority to terminate the contract, but make a recommendation to council as to whether this should be terminated or not. If the companies are being unreasonable, we'll air that out here. But at least, we're sending it back. I would like us to revisit this when it comes back to us. I'm not sure we have that in this motion.
Mr. City Attorney.
Clarification, please. Question of the city attorney. If the commission takes a vote, do we have the authority to 245 that item into council?
If it's to terminate the contract, they could 245 it. This matters before council pursuant to Charter Section 606, so it could approve or disapprove. But if the board does terminate the contract later, council could 245 it, unless there's another charter section that allows it jurisdiction otherwise.
Okay.
And as I read it right now, what it's saying is, the commission will terminate the contract if they do not come up with agreement, and it ends there. I'm just concerned that we have an obligation to our public to continue to provide this service, and I think there should be an appeal here at council to say, "This is reasonable. This is not reasonable, and let's move forward accordingly." I would ask if our makers of this amendment, if there could be something friendly in there, if not already, that the commission could make a recommendation to council. Or maybe you might clarify where my concerns are.
Ms. Hahn?
Let me just clarify that this really just says, if Lawa is unable to report back to us with possible amendments that would improve the conditions, then we're going to request the airport commission to terminate this contract. So it's not whether or not we agree on these conditions, where we come to an understanding on what will make significant... What this does is gives us flexibility. By the way, this contract is a five-year, month-to-month contract. So this gives us, and it gives, you know, my committee, the flexibility to hold them accountable for whether or not... Otherwise, the drivers are concerned that if we approve this contract today, where's the leverage? Who can we hold accountable that we do continue these discussions, that we do have investigations, that we continue this debate, unless we have in there that we expect? And see, I would like to hold this up for 60 days, period, but I've been told that we're not, we cannot do that because we have a last date to act on March 24th. So this is my way of saying, let's approve the contract, but let's also, in 60 days, tell the airport commission, we want them to terminate it if we have not found in the 60 days that both sides are negotiating in good faith to come up with what I know we will find as possible improvements to the working conditions of the taxi cab drivers. Does that make sense?
Mr. Weezer, and then Mr. Reyes.
Mr. President, I'm focusing on the word, "if Lawa is unable to report back." I just want to make it clear. It's a reporting mechanism. So it, and it is report, will be report on what that is or is not, but I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay. Thank you. Was, just before we get to Mr. Reyes, was there then any friendly amendment you needed still to offer formally?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. You know, the previous friendly amendment about how we structure interim reports, understand what variables we're looking at, I mean, what are the contractual issues, the verbiage, which just strikes me right now, we have a, did I hear correctly, a five-year, month-to-month contract? So isn't that a double-edged sword? I mean, how do you have a five-year, month-to-month? I mean, where's the credibility? Where's the accountability? And where's, I mean, how did we get there? I mean, how often do we do this?
Well, all of the contracts at the airport have 30-day termination clauses in them, and this contract is no exception.
So where's the logic in terms of performance standards and producing the product the way we want it? I mean, where...
Well, Councilmember, that is, that is the lever that the airport holds over ATS. If we are unsatisfied with their performance, we can, either with or without cause, terminate their contract on 30 days' notice.
So how much time do they have to actually produce and establish themselves if they have a knife over their head every 30 days?
We have a very close relationship with the supervision of ATS. We have worked with them over the years to formulate the policies and procedures that work best at the airport, and we continue to work in partnership with them and with the drivers to make sure that their needs are all being served.
Okay. I need time to digest what we're doing there, but in terms of responding to what we heard today, are you in a position to give us some type of interim report to discuss the parameters or define how this contract should be looked at, given what's been stated today? Do we have that ability?
Mark Adams, Los Angeles World Airports, under the, under the terms of this motion that's been forth by Councilmember Hahn, we're supposed to report back in 60 days with, among other things, a recommended amendment to this contract, which will be subject to council approval, that will incorporate those aspects of the improved conditions that can be incorporated, that, or should be incorporated by amendment to the contract.
So given 60 days, could you give us in two weeks how that skeleton's going to look?
We'd be happy to report back to committee on our progress, sure. As it develops, I mean, I'm sure that Ms. Hahn would, if Ms. Hahn agendas us for the committee, we'd be happy to report back there.
Is something we can do in terms of getting the skeleton of what we're going to do to the contract, how we're going to define those issues? If they're saying they can do it, just so that we can digest what's going on here, because it just, this is fairly new to all of us.
I'm, you know, again, Councilwoman Grul and I are going to have access to a survey that was done of taxi cab drivers, and in the next 60 days, I think we want to, you know, look at that and have a joint committee meeting. So I'm thinking two weeks is probably not going to be enough time for us to come back with any significant amendments to this contract. I say, let's give it the 60 days. You know, at that point, again, we've already approved the contract, and the 60 days doesn't mean that we necessarily make the amendments at that time to the contract. The 60 days is just, we're going to, that'll be the report back that we look at as the skeleton for the amendments that we may need to make. So I think we're, I think to say two weeks is a little unrealistic to think they're going to have our discussions, that we would have had our hearing, that we would have had the survey results. I think we need 60 days to kind of digest all this. It's new to, I think, everybody to hear these concerns.
And again, I, what strikes me in terms of that interim report, it really is to not only understand how these issues are going to be defined, but also ease the tension between the differing parties and making sure we're putting what we need to put on the table. That would be the only reason for asking for that type of skeletal report, knowing that it's going to develop into the 60-day report. And that would be the main reason why I would ask for such an understanding in terms of how you're documenting and outlining this discussion.
Thank you very much. Ms. Grul.
Thank you. I just wanted to, and I don't know if I'm the last speaker here, but this, this discussion that we've had today is the first time, other than in September, when, again, we had some issues relative to increasing the amount of reimbursement on the gas aspect of taxi cabs. But this is the first time, and maybe you'll greet Ms. Hahn, I mean, you've been on council a year more than I have, but that we've had this type of dialogue about the importance of both the service to our, you know, individuals who are visiting Los Angeles or utilize taxi cabs on a, on a daily basis, because we, we think of it mostly being tourists, but there are a lot of people who depend on taxi cabs for their livelihood to get to a location. And so this is a, a good thing that we're having, occurring today. The discussion that we're having is, I think, an opportunity for us to provide better service and to provide a better opportunity for our taxi cab drivers. And so this is, again, I'm surprised we haven't had this kind of conversation in the four years that I have been here, where we've talked about this issue because it is so critical to our economy and so critical to our residents in Los Angeles. And so I'm looking forward to the partnership that Ms. Hahn and I are going to have to talk about, not only what happens at the airport, because it is the prime location of where we have our, utilize our taxi cabs, but citywide, and how we do that. And to learn more. That is, again, clearly why I had my appointments set today with Mr. Chiswick, was to say, you know, tell me what you've been doing on the commission as a, and the commission's goals and objectives, and how we work together to bring this issue up to the forefront. So I know we often say that, we stand up and say, "This was a good day for public policy in the city, a good day for us addressing issues that are important." And so I'm looking forward to that participation and dialogue for all of us to get up to speed, so to speak, on what's happening on taxi cab issues, and to use the kinds of information through the survey, through Julie, through the, through Lawa, and through the Department of Transportation, so that we can make good public policy decisions about this issue in Los Angeles. So thank you to all of my colleagues who have brought this issue to the forefront, and a commitment by myself, and I know Ms. Hahn, to look at this in the broader picture. Thank you for taking, I know, hours out of your day, both, both sides here, to have this discussion and dialogue, and look forward to us coming back with a kind of knowledge base to make some public policy decisions. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That's our final speaker. Madam Clerk, will you please tell us what we have before us with the amendments?
There's Councilmember Reyes's amendment that was requesting an interim report back on the, how this item was going to be defined and what the issues were defined as prior to the 60-day report.
Okay. Now, it's accepted as friendly. There's no objection on the council. So with that, if we can please prepare the roll on the item and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved, and we thank everybody for your testimony and your time today. And if we can, send that forthwith, please. If we can next go to item 17, I think there's been a report circulated, or amendment circulated on that. Mr. Zine called that special. Is that true, Madam Clerk? There's been...
I don't believe there's an amendment.
Excuse me one second, Madam Clerk. Shhh. Can I please ask people to please keep it down and to take your conversations outside so we can continue with the next item? Thank you. 17, there's been something circulated? Is that...
I haven't seen an amendment on that.
Okay.
But there are two reports on that file.
Well, I will move both reports. If there's nobody wishes to be heard on that, Mr. Zine is no longer with us, so why don't we open the roll on that? On item 17, please. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, 17 is approved. Next item, please.
On 17...
Next item, Mr. President, item number 40.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
On 17, did we move the budget and finance report?
We moved both, because they don't contradict. Yeah, I moved both of them. Okay. Item 40, next?
Yes, and that was called special by Councilmember Grul.
Ms. Grul? We have item 40, but it was called special for you. You weren't, I believe Mr. Labange called it special for you.
Thank you. He did. And I'll speak on behalf of Mr. Labange and myself today. Colleagues, this is an item before you that is related to our comment period on the draft EIR for the IRP and moving that to March 31st, 2006. I want to acknowledge the hard work that the Bureau of Sanitation has, has done in response to the motion that Mr. Labange introduced and I co-presented with him. The proposed sewer projects of the integrated plan and the environmental impacts described in the EIR warrant this time for the community to get further input and maximum amount of information possible, and give them the opportunity to give their greatest amount of input. And I know that my constituents have been very active in this process as we try to ensure saving Woodbridge Park in my district so that it is not used for the staging area for this sanitation project. If people in Council Districts 2 and 4 and other areas along the proposed sewer line have not already done so, we urge them to make their opinions and comments known through the draft EIR public comment process. The engineers and experts do know a lot about the sewer project, but no one knows more about their communities and the real face of this potential impacts than our constituents. So I also want to mention, as I speak here today, that my staff is working very closely with the Bureau of Sanitation and Caltrans regarding the facility on Moore Park and Elmer Street Avenue, excuse me, Elmer Avenue in Studio City to fuller, fully explore this alternative. I spoke to both the regional Caltrans director, as well as the state Caltrans director, telling them that the choice between a park and a Caltrans site is really a no-brainer. That park is an integral part of our community. We can work with Caltrans to go for their maintenance yard to share with another location. And so Caltrans has been willing to have those discussions, and this draft comment EIR period allows for further community input. So thank you very much, Mr. President, and ask for an aye vote on behalf of Mr. Labange and myself.
Thank you. On that, if there's nobody else who wishes to be heard, let's prepare the roll on the item and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved as well. All right. Next item.
Mr. President, item number 5 was adopted previously. However, there is an amending motion that, or substitute motion that has been distributed. Do you wish to reconsider item 5 so that can be...
Sounds like a smart thing to do. Why don't we open the roll and reconsideration if there's no objection and tabulate the vote?
11 ayes.
Okay, that is before us. Anybody wishing to be heard? If not, let's move the substitute motion and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved as well. Next item.
Mr. President, do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Sure, let's do that.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
Their excuses on the desk. Councilmember Weezer requests to be excused Friday, March 24th, for city business. That meets council policy.
All right. Mr. Weezer is excused.
Councilmember Grul requests to be excused March 29th, to leave at noon, and April 26th, to arrive at 11:00 a.m. A motion is required, and those for personal business, the motion is required on the 29th.
On both of them, excuse me? Oh, I want to...
On, just on the 29th.
Okay. Mr. Reyes moves, and Ms. Perry seconds. If there's no objection, she is excused.
Councilmember Parks requests to be excused Tuesday, March 21st, for city business. A motion is required.
All right. Mr. Reyes moves again, and Ms. Perry seconds. If there's no objection, that's unanimous vote. That excuse is granted.
And Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Tuesday, March 21st, for city business. A motion is required on that. It requires, and Friday, April 28th, for city business. That meets council policy.
Okay, she is excused as well. Mr. Parks?
And that clears the desk.
26? Okay, we'll do 26 forthwith, please. And that clears the desk. We have one closed, we have, is it just one closed-session item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, that would be item number 64.
Okay. We will now go in conformance with California state law. We're going to go into executive session to discuss any legal issues around item 64, and we will come back into open session. If we take any action, we will announce that and have to take that as well publicly. So with that, if we can please clear the council chambers, and we will come back after this closed session into open session soon. Welcome back to the Los Angeles City Council. It is now about 3:10. We've been in session for about 6 hours and 10 minutes. We just came out of closed session, and we did not take action today on the update, and we were briefed on those issues. Right now, we have a motion before us to receive and file that information. If there's no objection, let's please open the roll on that, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That will be received and filed, and I thank the members for their discussion and the questions that were a part of this. Any other items, Madam Clerk?
No, the desk is clear.
Okay. Colleagues, now it is time for announcements. Are there any council members with announcements, starting with Ms. Hahn, and working our way around the horseshoe?
Well, it was already sort of alluded to, but I'm very pleased to announce the arrival of Josiah David Yates, who came yesterday at about 12:17. This is my first grandson. My third grandchild, he joins his older sisters McKenna and Brooklyn, but I was in the delivery room and got to witness the whole thing. My daughter did a great job, and I'm very happy to welcome him to the world. He's a beautiful baby boy.
Great, 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 great. Thank you. Mr. Labange?
Members, I want to apologize. I just got back in the building, and I could not believe that you guys are still in session. You're very dedicated there. We had a great parade, no, no, a great parade for St. Patrick's Day. A little bit of rain, but I thank you. It was a big little rain out there, but it was a wonderful day for St. Patrick's Day. Thank you. You waited for me to come back. I just walked in, I couldn't believe it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange.
People called me, they saw you in the parade.
Oh, good.
I'm sorry it rained on the parade today. Mr. Parks?
Did you say you wanted to reconsider 1 through 60?
No, you're a beautiful man, no.
Let me just go through a couple of announcements. The Young Center for Academic and Cultural Enrichment, which is located on the USC campus, is announcing their summer intern program. Although the program covers June 27th to July 2nd, the application process ends as of April 1st. Contact number is 310-670-8500. Also have a, Crenshaw Christian Center will have its annual cleanup program on March 25th, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00, at the area of Vermont in the immediate area of the campus. Contact number is 323-758-377, extension 4700. Tomorrow, the Junior Blind of America will be having its Olympics on Saturday, March 18th, at 5300 Angeles Vista. Contact number 323-295-4556. Also, LAPD and the LA Fire Department will have their annual recruitment drive, Women Recruitment Expo on Saturday, March 25th, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00, at Elysian Park at the LA Police Academy at 1880 North Academy Road. And then finally, we had a couple of years ago, Mrs. Singleton came here because of the loss of her son Stevie in gang violence. She's going to have the second annual march in his memory on March 26, 1:30 p.m., at 4610 South St. Andrews Place.
Thank you. Other announcements, colleagues? Any other announcements? Seeing none, if I can please ask everybody to please stand for our adjourning motions. Sorry. Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Smith, if I can ask you to rise for adjourning motions, please? Thank you very much. Any adjourning motions, colleagues? Starting with Ms. Hahn again.
Thank you, members. We missed a few meetings, so I have four that I'd like to adjourn our meeting today in memory of. First one is Lucille MacArthur, who passed away last week at the young age of 46, lifelong San Pedroan. She was born on Father's Day. She attended Mary's Star of the Sea from elementary through high school graduation. She is married to Gary MacArthur, and they had two children, and she is the daughter of Josephine and Anthony Nizetich, who are longtime members of the San Pedro community. She, Lucille, joined her parents and her siblings in designing and opening Nizetich's restaurant on the waterfront. Many of you might have gone to that restaurant in its heyday. It's no longer there, but she was, had the position of the banquet manager, and she executed countless parties and events where everyone thought she just performed magic in that position. Fortunately, she was diagnosed with breast cancer in 2000, but she really had a long, brave battle, which unfortunately she lost, but she survived by her two children, Nicole and Michael, their father Gary, her parents Anthony and Josephine Nizetich, two sisters, one brother, plus nieces, nephews, and they were practically all of San Pedro attended her funeral service this week. She will be greatly missed. Her parents really loved her very, very much to the end. It was amazing thing to watch them all go through this together. The next person I'd like us to adjourn our motion, our meeting in memory of, Bill Schwab, who is longtime Wilmington resident and activist, and I would consider him a dear friend of mine. Bill and his wife Gertrude were the first couple I really got to know when I ran for this city council seat back in 1992, and I never have met anybody that loved or fought for the community of Wilmington any more than Bill and Gertrude Schwab. He, they were really defined the term "community activist." Unfortunately, he lost his beloved Gertrude several years ago, and it's been really hard for Bill ever since. They really were a team, and I think their, you know, love for Wilmington was really only surpassed by their love for each other. Just a great community. He was in the Merchant Marines in World War II, and he was, he and Gertrude were the founders of the Merchant Marine Memorial that is in San Pedro along John Gibson, along Harbor Boulevard, and we honor the Merchant Marines every year on May 22nd at that memorial. So, he was a true Wilmington hero. His contributions will live on forever. He survived by his three sons, Michael Frank and David, a sister, seven grandchildren, one great-grandchild, and the viewing will be held Monday at McNerney's on Avalon, and the services will be held at that same location on Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. We will really miss Bill Schwab. Wilmington is a better place today because of his activism. I also want to adjourn in memory of another Wilmington resident, John Roberts, who was 74 years old and was a resident of Wilmington for 22 years. He passed away on Tuesday as well. He also was a community advocate and very politically involved. He was involved with the Wilmington Optimists Club, the New Wilmington Committee, and was the founder and publisher of the Harvard Journal, a community paper that he published from his home for over five years. He survived by his wife Diane, five children, 12 grandchildren, and his memorial service will be Monday at 11:00 a.m. at Harvard Christian Center in Wilmington. John really was another great Wilmington resident who loved that community and fought for it. My final one is to adjourn in the memory of the father of Dennis Lord, who many of us know works for the gas company. His father, Dennis Lord, also, who was a resident of Los Angeles for most of his entire life. He served our country in the National Guard and the Army, but he worked with aircraft and at night, to help the troop morale, he would run movies. And at the end of the war, he was sent to Camp Ross in Wilmington, where he ran the post theater. He worked for Pacific Electric Welray as a signalman, and he was honored recently for 50 years of running the movies by the government, and in retirement was adopted by the staff of the Warner Grand Theater in San Pedro. Apparently, he met his wife, Marjorie, when she called up one night in Wilmington and said, you know, what movie are you showing tonight? And I guess the rest is history. And he was married to her for 51 years. He survived by sister Margaret, four children, Dennis Lord of Long Beach, Leslie Marvel of Moreno Valley, Stephen Lord of Wilmington, and Nancy Lord of Riverside. He also has eight grandchildren and seven great-grandchildren. I just saw him last month when he attended the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce breakfast meeting, and I know Dennis was very proud of his father, and I would really like us to adjourn our meeting today in the memory of Dennis Lord.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much, Ms. Garcetti. Members, I'd like you all to join with me in memory of Judge Delbert E. Wong. Lived to be 85. He had a wonderful service just yesterday in Forest Lawn in the Hollywood Hills. He lived in Silver Lake District. He was the first Chinese-American appointed to the bench in the United States. Grew up in Hanford, California, raised in Bakersfield, California, and went to UC Berkeley, where he met his wife Dolores, which they were married in 1948. Very special man in our community too, because he was my scout master of Troop 527 at Ivanhoe Elementary School. He was a great judge. He, in his services yesterday, one of the themes of his eulogy was a life complete, to live 85 years. He died a week ago today after playing 18 holes of golf in Griffith Park. A beautiful man, what he was. He survived by his wife Dolores, his son Kent, Duane, and his daughter Shelley, as well as Marshall Wong. He was in the United States Air Force during World War II and served in fighter missions over Berlin. He was appointed after he retired from the bench by Tom Bradley to serve on the original seven members of the Ethics Commission, and also one of his scouts in Troop 527. Judge Lance Ito asked him to be a special master in the O.J. Simpson trial. He was very involved in Chinese-American affairs, and I know Mr. Reyes knows of Judge Wong and his work, as well as Ms. Perry, the Chinese-American museum. I got a chance to visit him, and he told the story of Judge John Iso to me, who we know Judge John Iso is named after, who was the first Japanese-American. He has a street name to have to him in Little Tokyo, and Judge Wong told me all about Judge John Iso. But I did know that Judge John Iso, maybe Councilmember Parks may recall, he was a victim of a holdup at a gas station in Hollywood several years later, Judge John Iso. And we had this whole fabulous visit this last summer on the streets of Silver Lake. Delbert Wong, a great American, a great Chinese-American, a role model, a man who lived a life complete. I ask you all to join in his memory, and I know Ms. Perry and have everybody...
We'll have all members on that. Mr. Reyes on this?
Yes, I'd like to also share a few thoughts. Judge Wong was one of the pioneers, one of the first persons of color to move into Silver Lake. He was asked by the mayor then to, after he retired from the bench, to work with the Los Angeles Department of Airports to conduct an extensive probe into allegations of racial discrimination within 300 member of the LA Airport Police Bureau. After his investigation, the department revises promotional practices and retain an outside agency to conduct human relations training. They played a significant role, him and his wife, in the Chinese-American community. He was a leading financial supporter of the Asian-Pacific American Legal Center. He was also a key supporter of the Chinatown Service Center, which is best known for its senior citizen programs. Mr. Wong and his wife were also co-founders of the Asian-Pacific American Friends of the Center Theater Group in the 1990s. He survived by their son Kent. Kent Wong, very active in the UCLA Center for Labor Research and Education. By Shelley Wong Pitts, a professor at George Mason University. Duane Wong, a musician and businessman in Richmond, California. And Marshall Wong, an official of the LA County Commission on Human Relations. Hey, rest in peace.
Thank you very much. Ms. Perry? Do you have one, Ms. Parks? adjourn much, Ms. Perry?
Thank you. I wanted to adjourn in memory of Mrs. May Luss. He was, she was a longtime resident of the Ninth Council District, an active community member and a member of the 53rd Street Block Club. She was a very friendly lady, very talkative, and would always go out of her way to help people. Her warmth will never be forgotten, and I'd like to join the family in mourning her loss. She is survived by three children, Jerry, Donald, and daughter Gloria. Her service is Saturday at 10:00 a.m. at Angeles Funeral Home on 39th and Crenshaw.
Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? Again, thank you, colleagues, for your patience today. If you're watching us live, have a good afternoon. If you're watching us on the replay, it's 2:30 in the morning, so go to sleep. And with that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is hereby adjourned. We will next be meeting next Tuesday, and that is Tuesday, the 21st of March. We look forward to seeing folks here. That'll be at 10:00 a.m. as is usual, and we'll be meeting on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday of next week at 10:00 a.m. Thank you all very much, colleagues. This meeting is adjourned.